Dr. Campbell, are you able to hear us?
Now I can. Good evening.
Excellent. We're excited to have you with us tonight. We just introduced you and the work that you've been doing very broadly. And wanted to hand it over to you for the presentation that we are eagerly awaiting about the strategic plan.
Thank you so much, board members. Good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent Valderras, members of the community. I'm excited to give you an update on the process that I shared with you a few months ago. We've, we're making steady strides, so I'm going to go ahead now and share screens. Let me know when you see my screen.
We can see it.
Okay. Got four deliverables that I'd like to have you say at the end that we came close, if not perfectly meeting. One is to give you an update on our efforts. I want to also share with you products that the core planning team and the district leadership team have created. One of the things that's unique about our process, we believe in broad co-construction. There are hundreds of strategic plans that have died in the river of non-ownership. And we want to be sure we've got lots of ownership. I want to share, because at the end of the day, board members, it's going to be the rank and file people in schools that have to implement the plan. Marzano, all these leaders will tell you that when you've got lots of leaders co-constraining, it's much more likely to be implemented with fidelity. I'm going to also share with you themes from the listening and learning surveys. I'm anticipating a few folks will be in the audience who actually themed this information. I think I saw one of our leaders out there. Carrie, anyone who's not here, I'm going to ask that you share those themes if we don't have someone who actually did the theming with the board. And then I'm going to ask you to give us some stems as a board for the mission statement. The mission statement is a statement of why the district exists. I think right now you don't have one. And the last task will be to give us key words and phrases that you think as a board are critical to be in the mission statement so that we can take it back to our writing group to draft it up, and we'll bring back the draft to the board. And, and I want to say maybe six to eight weeks. So those are the things we want to accomplish. I want to remind you of the guiding principles. Having been a superintendent, having coached superintendents all over the country, working with the University of Washington, these are some of the guiding principles that you can find in school improvement science research, but also just experience. And this process is designed to inspire the next iteration of improvement. It is designed so that we don't come with a strategic plan in tow. We do a lot of this organically. So it's done with the district, not to the district or for the district. It's anchored in scholar voice. I will be sharing with you, for example, the vision of excellence. And it started with listening and learning with almost 100 students who helped to inform it. The goals in the plan will ultimately be student-centered goals, and we will also use best practices of equitable practices. We will be using research and evidence-based practices. I've got an article that I'm going to share with you as a sample of the learning that the core planning team is engaged in, because not only do I have the group strategic planning, I'm doing things so they're learning about best practices. Because in February, we're going to have literally hundreds of people writing strategies to align to the goals, and you want them to have had what I call exposure to research evidence-based practices. And the last component, again, that I think is unique about the process is that we will begin, we're at the place now where we're doing the work, and we are aligning the vision statement and doing something called a theory of action that goes all the way to the central office. Plans are only as good as the coordination is at the district office. And this is, again, a unique step that's embedded in this process so that we can be sure we're positioned to act upon it. I wanted to call out the role of the board in the plan. I talked to you a little bit about some opportunities for you to participate, but here are the things that I hold in my head as a former superintendent and looking in the research. The ultimate responsibility the board has is to hold the superintendent and team accountable for improving the outcomes in the plan. And what that looks like in some systems, once the plan is fleshed out, you schedule predictable times to check in on progress to see if those outcomes are being met. To do learning, once we lay out some best practices, so you can do deep learning on these best practices so that when it's time for budget and resource allocation, you understand why and what it is you are sourcing. And once the plan is drafted, it's important to do a crosswalk to ensure policies would not hinder the plan from actually happening. And to inform the mission statement that you're going to be doing that later today. And then lastly, the process of co-construction. Certainly, I've seen districts where you'd have a small group of people, four or five, saying, here's what we want to do. It might feel good for the three or four of doing it, but the problem is it never works because you need the people that are in the ground, on the ground, in the classrooms to be a part of the co-construction. And once they coalesce around this process, you're going to get much larger scale buy-in. I want to remind you of some research. One of the main ones is this first one from Batel that says districts should identify five or fewer initiatives for the district, three or fewer for a building. We're, we're not quite there yet, but when we're done, we should have goals. So buildings will have two or three goals. The district, no more than five or fewer initiatives. That's critical. Other than that, you're going to overtask the system. And folks will say, yep, we're doing it, we're doing it, but yet they can't physically do it. So we have to create focus as a result of engaging in this plan. Here are the committees. The district steering committee meets in between all major meetings to plan what's going to happen. The district leadership team. Today, you're going to give us some stems for the mission statement. This district leadership team is the writing group. They come together and they craft different products. The core planning team is the heart and soul of the committee. They meet once a month, and it's broad stakeholders. I think the mayor is on this group. We have scholars, students on this group, teachers, building leaders, community, parents. That particular group touches everything. Again, wide-scale co-construction. Then in February, once the goals are fleshed out, the outcomes and the metrics, the instructional planning team will be the teaching side of the house. It will be instructional coaches, teachers, district coordinators, district teaching for learning folks, principals. They're going to take the goal areas and identify 10 to 15 strategies that we believe, no matter your school, you should employ your school. Because the research is clear, we've got to be sure we have some consistent practices across schools, not cookie cutter, but just some consistent things. Well, if we just say, go out and do them, that's one thing. It's a different thing having your peers look in the research and say, we were a part of it. So that co-construction is critical, and we'll continue to loop in scholars to get their insights and voice throughout the process. And today, it's the governance team who's getting an update. So what's happened since I saw you last? There's a lot more than these four bullets, but these are the big ideas. We convened dozens, almost 100 scholars to ask them some questions to help inform the vision that I'm going to show you in a minute. And out of that conversation, there were themes that were shared with our core planning team and with our writing team, the district leadership team. We then took that feedback from the core planning team and the district leadership team. And that's what the core planning team is CPT, district leadership team is DLT. So I don't, I'm not very fond of acronyms, but for the sake of brevity, it does work to use them here. But the core planning team gave feedback, and then the district leadership team drafted the vision of excellence, which I will share. That team also drafted core values. And they took the stems from the core planning team, phrases that they thought were critical. That would be pivot points in this district because you didn't have those core values fleshed out, so I'll be sharing those with you as well. And then we engaged in listening and learning in November. The next day, we issued a survey. We got over, I want to say participation rates close to 1,500. I will share with you what came out of those themes. And I'll talk to you a little bit about how those themes will help us with our strategy work, with our strategy work. Okay? Here is the progress report about where we are. When we're done, when we're done, every product, every indicator here should have a green mark, but you can see where we are. The vision of excellence has been done, it's been drafted, the core values are drafted up. The next component will be the central office theory of action. That really is one of the most important things. We literally take that student vision, and we say, if that's what we want students to do, what will educators do? What will school leaders do? What will the central office do? And it's often ignored, which is why you don't get alignment. So we're going to be working on that over the next six to eight weeks. The mission statement worked with you tonight. The listening and learning and the survey is complete. And we've generated the themes from listening and learning, which we will provide the board with tonight. Lots of rich information. And we've got work that's already queued up, and we're planning for the instructional planning team to do the strategy work in February. That's one of the big things that's in front of us. I want to just reorient you to this framework that drives a lot of the processes by saying that we all have core beliefs. But until you get enough people in the room to create a student-centered vision, it's hard to describe that, those core beliefs. And your student-centered vision is really our core beliefs, our core values with clothes on, so you can actually see what we say we want for scholars. We then measure that vision. So when you think about outcomes and metrics, board members, it should be driven from the vision that we frame for students. Often, what we do, we measure inputs. How many trainings we had, how many people came to the training, how much we saw something in a classroom. We don't measure direct student outcomes, and I don't just mean academic. I mean social-emotional outcomes, belonging outcomes. That's how you're going to know you're ultimately moving the needle to your larger community and parent stakeholder group, but foremost to our scholars. So this framework drives it. So right now, the vision is done. We've got our core values. We haven't yet defined our outputs, but the next step is doing this backwards map of the theory of action, which will determine the inputs. The inputs really shape what happens to the student, which then tells us whether or not we're getting the results we want. So this is just the frame that I use to, to shape all of the structures and processes that we're using with the team. And it's about alignment. It is about alignment. And as I listened on a full day, then our entire team was there, two different groups doing listening all over the district. There is work to be done around alignment based on what I heard from scholars, students, staff, and families. When things are aligned, they are coherent. This is the other research that I just want to anchor you in. It's from the University of Chicago, and they said, these are the five essentials. When you saw districts or schools improving, you saw effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involve families, supportive environments, that's where belonging goes, that's where all of those things that when students are seen, heard, and feel like they matter, and ambitious instruction, those five. And the reason I'm sharing those with you, when we get to the place where we're identifying strategies, we'll use this kind of research to generate the kinds of strategies that make the biggest bang for your buck. This is just one example. There are multiple ones. Here's another article that I shared with the core planning team. I wanted them to get the sense, the difference between acceleration and remediation. There is a lot happening around the country with students who are off track. And you hear a lot about remediation, and what I tell districts, you need to be more in the acceleration side of this brain, not the remediation. And I had the core planning team to unpack this so they could figure out the difference. Why share this? Well, when we generate our strategies, we want strategies that are more about acceleration than remediation. Board members, can you see it on any screen where you could read it? I know it's smaller writing. Can you see this?
It's a little different.
Right here.
Is there something you could send us, Dr. Campbell?
Yes. You know what I'm going to do. Do you all have laptops in front of you?
Uh, well, some of us do and some of us don't.
So.
We do have a screen.
Kylie, can you drop this in the chat box, this slide? So we're, we will drop this in the chat box for you. Okay? Um, bottom line, while you're waiting on it, what I want you to see is that this particular chart is, I call this the money shot. This is the money shot in that it clearly defines what kinds of things that we would do with students if we want to see them accelerating. And I don't mean going fast. I mean qualitatively engaging in ambitious instruction. And it talks about relevancy. It talks about connected learning. It gives you real cues about how to close those gaps. So this is one example of what I share with the core planning team. So want you to know that they are engaged in learning, just like our educational staff. And again, we'll send this to you momentarily. I want you to take a minute to read this quote by Simon Sinek, Simon Sinek from The Infinite Game. And in it, he talks about this idea of a just cause. So before we did the vision of excellence, I wanted the team to think about, when you write something up, you want it to be a just cause. And a just cause is a specific vision of a future state that does not yet exist. A future state so appealing that people are willing to make sacrifices in order to help advance toward that vision. And a just cause is not about our why. Our why comes from the past. A just cause is about our future, the world, the school we hope to build. So when you, when you're writing a vision, it shouldn't be something you see now. It should be something that you want to see every student experience in the not-too-distant future. So here is the vision of excellence. That's very student-centered of what we want students to say they experience in the Beaverton School District. I want you to take a minute, and I'd like you to look at it. And I'd like each of you, in a sentence, to say what part of it most resonates for you.
Share it out loud?
Yes, just give it one minute. I want to make sure everyone has a chance, just one second, just 30 seconds, and then I'll, I'll hear from each of you. Okay. So I'd love to hear what, what's resonating, if each of you can just say which one resonates. Which part resonates most for you?
Well, there's like two, or like all of them, but I mean, the one I see at the bottom where I see a feature I want and I know how to achieve it resonates with me.
Okay.
I don't think I could pick just one, but I would say that the one at the bottom seems like a result of having achieved some of the ones above it.
Agreed. Yes, there is a progression.
I picked several words from the different ones. So I, an experience of a student that would be a space where they experienced belonging, they're believed in, challenged, supported in that, so that they can see a future, and they know how to achieve it.
Okay.
So I think, I believe in myself, and my community believes in me. If we as a community do not believe in our students, we are not going to give them that future that they deserve. So we have to believe in them and believe in that they are worth it, that whatever we're doing, whatever vision we're mapping out for them, they are certainly worth it. So that's what resonates to me.
Powerful. So this vision started with students. We went to the core planning team and asked them what words or phrases would be essential. We took those words and phrases from that committee of about 80 people. Your district leadership team of about 40, and I'm giving you rough estimates, crafted this. Then we take it back to the core planning team, and they give us feedback. It's this accordion process of broad, broad input. The one non-negotiable for me is that it has to be student-centered. So we're talking about student outcomes. To project one activity that will happen, when we do the theory of action, the central office will take every single one of these bullets, and they will say, every student is to belong and matter. What will educators have to do? What will principals have to do? And what will the central office have to do? We'll backwards map it. So I'll stop. I think I heard someone else trying to say something.
I like the word one. The second one, before, I feel connected to my learning, because learning is why they are there, and they need to feel connected to that. And to my peers, because peers is also very important. And I would add community element and adults in my school, because I think all those parts are very important for a student to succeed. And their, and their journey.
I want to be sure everyone's had an opportunity. So this vision is what we, in the end, will be measuring. We'll be measuring academic parts of it. We'll be measuring the social-emotional parts. And we'll be measuring the belonging slash healthy identity components of it. Whole child, that's what this will get us to, but this is how it starts. So once the vision is framed, we then frame up core values. And I explained to the team, the core values should be on the job postings, on the website. They signal who Beaverton is and what you're about. And they're invitational to people who, hopefully, who share your core values, and they're also deterrents to people who don't. And why this matter, the vision and core values will be the filter for all decision-making. It also signals what matters and staff actions. So we went to the core planning team. They looked at the core, at the vision of excellence, and we said, what might be core values of a district that would vision that for its children? They gave us words and phrases, and then we went back to the district leadership team, and this is what they generated as core values. Board members, will you take a minute to look at the core values? And give us a sense of what is really resonating? What do you see that you think, yep, that's a core value that I, I can rally around as a board member? There's a group of about eight folks who worked on this, including your deputy superintendent. Not wanting to be too wordy, to be simple and powerful and clean and aligned to the vision that I just shared. I'd love to get some responses to the core values.
Becky. My first, I just want to establish, we are now changing the word student or children or whatever to scholars.
Where do you see, oh, I just noticed that. So right now, that's what the committee drafted up and shared with the core planning team. I'd love to get your feedback on this. This, this is, so one of the most important things that I should will tell the board. I certainly use that word, but there are districts that go with students, so it's not something that I am trying to influence your team or anyway. But there are times when people say we like that word. So this is all done from your team internally. This is the draft that they shared, the core planning team. I can certainly probe that question.
It's just, my main thing is anytime they're trying to get anything across their community is being consistent in your messaging. And I would, I would just say, just speaking for myself, that is not a word that we have used here locally.
Right.
So that, to me, would be an educational process that everybody knew what we're referring to when we talk about scholars. So I, I'm not saying that I agree or disagree. I'm just saying it would be a different cultural norm for us that we would need to adopt. And then my only other takeaway is a lot of good words up there, a lot of things. And just like how we have with our strategic plan now, and you know, we innovate, you know, these would be things that we could rally around. But I do see that there are words up there that would need definition. Because I would think that there are folks in our community, as well as on our cabinet, as well as our students or scholars that would, would interpret some of the words differently that are, that are in there.
Actually, Becky, if I can tag on that, I always think when you see standard base, that's very edgy speak as opposed to speaking to our community. And I feel that our core values should be speaking to our community. So I'm sure there's some other, and the other kind of vibe I have with this is interesting because my kids happen to go to an IB school, and I read these core values, and they seem to relate to what you would, what I've seen come out of the IB programs, kind of that similar kind of global look at things.
Yeah, I could see that. We had an IB school in our, in federal way. I could see that.
For the keywords, oh, sorry.
I was just saying, with any new thing, socializing it is going to be important. That's going to be critical. And socializing, meaning unpacking it, repeating it, doing it at parent nights. There are a lot of different to go about that. And I'm hearing you talk about even a glossary. So there was a group that worked on this. We can certainly go back and talk to them about when the plan is fleshed out, how might we have some unpacking? But I really appreciate that feedback.
For me, one of the words that I can see, I, I For me, one of the words that I can see, I I understand and I I agree with the phrasing at the bottom of of the core words. One word that I would want to change would be the word respect. I agree with belonging as a person, as a parent, of course, we want our kids to respect and the staff to respect, but amongst.
Which one were you looking at?
The word respect, belonging and respect, the first.
I got it.
So along the work that I've done and the readings I've done, the word respect amongst our communities of color is it's one of those words that you expect from the point of view of who and from who, right? So is it dominant culture, respect, is it? But what is that? I would use a different word than respect.
Yeah.
It's it's a very impactful word for our communities of color. And when we think about behavior and discipline, that's one of those pieces where our students get dinged around what people view as respectful and not respectful. I do see within the words below it, like that we're honoring the voices and the dignity of our people. And so I I know what you're trying to say because of the what's described below, but I would not use the word respect. I would choose a different word. That means that could bring that I could rally around perhaps.
Superintendent Beldur, it's just checking. Is there anyone in the audience who was a part of the core values group? No?
Yeah.
Heather.
Heather is there. Excellent. Okay, there we go. Just want to be sure we're taking notes for on that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
Perfect. That's it. I can't see so good. Okay.
Dr. Campbell, I've noticed in that third core value that it jumps around from broader concepts like critical thinking and then things like growth mindset, which are more specific or standard space. And I actually don't think that's necessarily an issue. But what I'm trying to understand is by putting growth mindset or by putting standards based into that statement, we're basically saying as a district, that is one of our marquee strategies and that we're going to be carrying that forward. And I don't know if that's the intention or not. If that is the intention, then you know, I want want to just think about it. I don't necessarily have a response. But I just want to make sure that we're intentional about that.
Yeah. And I would imagine the group, when they're doing these descriptors, these descriptors are what I call contemporary or future forward ways in which we're going to realize our core values. So I think it's intentional for a reason. So I I would I I would predict that, yes, these were chosen for a reason by that group.
I'm wondering, will our students be seeing these and giving input on these, but the words that are on there are words that they actually would want to have on there?
We've done that through the core planning team. We have students on that group. So that's one way. We certainly we're going to do another round with scholars sometime in February. We can certainly bring it back to them then as well.
I'd like to see what their input is on some of the words that's we're trying to build something for them, right? And for their future. So I think it would be important to bring it back to them and loop them back in. And we do have other groups of students, maybe our student. Our student group that we have. It's student advisory committee. Yes, we have a student advisory committee as well and maybe and or bring back students that you've already talked to.
Which is a very diverse group. Real quick, last piece on this one, is there any core value that's missing?
I think it would be great to see something about well-rounded education in there as well.
Tell me what that means.
Providing a variety of experiences for our students.
How?
Very, very broadly.
How? What do others? I'm I'm going to ask each of you, knowing that you're a board as a whole. So I'm just listening for common things. What? How do others feel about that? Can we come to some consensus if there's anything that you see as a group that is missing? Sometimes people call that the whole child.
That works too. Yeah, that works too.
And that's in there.
It's it's, yeah.
We're.
The way it's in there, the way that I think it's in there and I want Heather, there's an academic component to the child. There's this belonging component to the child. And there's this community connectedness, which is in some ways social emotional. So I think they're thinking about this and whole child. They just didn't call it out as a separate thing. It's actually manifesting itself this way. Heather is, do I have that about right?
Yes, you do, Dr. Campbell. That's was spot on with the conversation that that group had when when working on this draft.
I I guess for me, it feels a little diffuse because it's not necessarily about the we're offering a well-rounded experience to our students. So or for our students, I should say.
Thank you. What do others think? I'd love to get consensus. Sorry, I didn't hear you continue. It's a little bit of a lag.
But one piece that I don't see is that joy for learning, like we are so standard based and so like, oh, we got to get them to the.
That I agree.
But I'm like, where's the joy in that? Where's the joy in this? Like, I want them to be like excited to come and connected and have joy. But maybe it's, I don't know how to put that in there. Like, we're really here to have fun and enjoy learning, but I don't know that that's the right wording either, but like just something about learning.
I'll tell you, one of the most powerful learnings I had was from your students. We asked them, there was a question about fun. And it was your students who said, this young man says, fun for students is when things are relevant to us. They defined it. They defined it better than any place I've been. But I get what you're talking about. And I will, I will also say standard space doesn't mean boring. When it's done well, it can be, it can be fun. I don't know that they're in opposition with each other, but I certainly get the point about joy. And and excitement, inspiration for students to want to participate.
And if the wording was relevant, so maybe that relevance should be highlighted and moved up into like relevant academic excellence, or I don't know, like bring up the relevance.
And that art, that's how they. That article I just shared with you, that one about acceleration and remediation, the core idea in that article for acceleration is relevancy.
Campbell, I was wondering, I do agree with what Tom said and what Karen said. I was wondering, the joy of education is always the joy of education and the rounded.
Round. Well-rounded.
Well-rounded education. Is it something that can be merged together as one core value?
So we're not actually editing it right now because I want to be respectful to the group of people. So what we're trying to do is listen to see if you're giving us a theme. You don't want to be in a position where we're writing things on at this meeting or it just nullifies everything they've done. But what I am listening for are what I call obvious omissions, and I'm sure Heather's doing the same thing. So what we're doing right now won't weigh in to say, yes, we're adding that or not. I'm just listening. And then your insights will inform us if we look at it again. So just keep talking because what's happening is you're coalescing around something that might actually strengthen the document and that's what we're listening for.
Becky. I'd say one thing that I look for while running for the school board and it's still something is I want to be about, I want to instill in our children lifelong learning, that they're always going to be learners. It's not just something they get from us pre K through twelve that they get. They get a foundation here that they become lifelong learners.
Sunita.
I like that piece, lifelong learning, a connection to their learning that that they're doing what we had in a previous slide. I think that would bring relevance and and a joy for learning. One piece that I would say is that we need to create spaces for our children and for our school, which are safe. And I don't know how we can bring that in our core value because with what's going on around in the country, parents do get scared, kids do get scared going into school. So how do we create spaces that are safe and nurturing for them and they feel that this is a place I want to go, I want to learn, they shouldn't be scared there. I don't.
I think Eric, Susan, you guys have any comments? I I think we've we've done a round with the board, Dr. Campbell.
Awesome. So we've listened. And as you can hear, we would, if we were to write everything down and revise it, it'd be a whole new document. That's not the way to go. But I did hear some things that I think are streams that we will certainly go back and filter with your input. Thank you, board members. So listening and learning. And Carrie, do I have the latest number, total responses? Is it a thousand?
Fourteen hundred.
Okay, all right. So fourteen hundred total responses. And although I may not have the, how many scholars do you have that? Carrie, just going to type it up. And what do you do? If you don't, I don't want to put you in the spot. I had this from before we got the last update. That's okay.
I think I think she's working on it, Campbell.
That's all right. I will just come back to it. I don't want to hold this up for that. Bottom line, we want to have big numbers in terms of the number of touches and the influence that folks have had on the plan. So again, we had two teams on the ground on November twenty first. We started at six thirty and we ended at seven at night. And we listened to lots of people and sometimes what folks will do, they'll just do a survey. The reason that listening is so important is that when you're in the room with people, they will give you more to the story. So that when the survey comes back, you can go, oh, I know why they said that. I know what that's about. And so certainly I I got a sense from listening and learning. One thing I know is the middle school schedule. Lots of comments on that, right? I heard a lot about high school start times. I heard things around your reading curriculum from parents. There were just themes and I I'm just saying this to you that just from being on the ground, you get a sense of what rises to the top. So before I share these with you, the these listing and learning themes will be a resource for us when we're building out our strategies in February. Meaning when we look at the things that rose, the top five, that will drive our foundations. It'll drive our strategies. It will drive some of what we will be putting in the plan. Research and evidence-based practice will also be a part of that, but this will be a part of the recipe and crafting the plan. So we did the listing and learning and then on the twenty second, that whole district survey was released. And here's the first question. What are two or three specific things that are working to support student success at your school or in the district? Now, if it were a student, well, no, this works for the student. So it was all about student success. That was that first, what's working? That was that first question. Carrie, Carrie, is the person in the room who did this one before I talk? Because I don't.
Can I go to where there's a mic or?
I could just advance the slide if someone's there.
Susan's coming. One sec.
Thank you so much.
Hello, Campbell. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you. You guys did such a nice job with this. So Susan, I'll hand this over to you. Thank goodness you're here.
Okay, wonderful. So Dr. Campbell did share that we spoke with a number of students. And this question, what's working to support student success? We had over thirty pages of their answers. The strongest thing by far is the top theme that you see, and it's really about the relationship within their context, human relationships matter. It came through as a very strong theme of what's working. Also, innovative programming was very important and structures that helped them to really feel like owners of their learning. I like the word agency. I really love that word. It's sort of like education, but I feel like it's a strong theme that our students are agents and learning, they want to be agents and learning. There are a lot of things are working for them. I like what was mentioned earlier about the coherence of the system being really important to support them. And that came true as one of the things that's working. For the next slide.
And I've just given, Susan, I'm sorry, I've been given a time check just so we know. We've got about ten more minutes before the regular board meeting. So just if we can just move a little bit quicker clip.
So the next question, there were more answers, more than forty pages. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm looking at your slide now. Either way, we have quotes from students and you can read them.
Board members, we included quotes to also illustrate the themes that would help you just to get a better, a deeper understanding. You'll have this presentation as well, just wanting to quickly give you some quotes on the themes that came up for what's working. Now staff. Okay.
Yes, and your evening, school board. So what's working from the support team, some of the staff, if I can see up there, possibly having staff in the middle is being able to support, looking to do this work out that you have. Been dedicated to that before we're playing this. Mom clock finally just came up briefly in the survey. It often there are a little more students following curriculum.
And these are the quotes. So we don't have to read them. Board members, you will have this information to go deeper. The point here is that we pulled out quotes to help provide clarity to the themes. And this is families here in the top five.
Beginning at the top five and our feedback from families, a lot of it had to do with these five key themes. Some of them you'll see again on the other side of the coin is things that we also need to improve that. And one of the things that we kind of interpreted from that is there are some things that we do really well, but there's maybe a lack of consistency throughout the district on doing those things well. To encourage these on both sides.
Okay. Here are the quotes again for time. I'm not pausing, but we will make sure that by the end of the presentation, you'll have all of this information to go deeper on themes with quotes. Now, here's the next question. What needs to be improved? So just pay attention to the themes, knowing you'll have those quotes to see a little bit later and to go deeper.
So for students, surprisingly, human relationships figure really big. It's a powerful letter and it came through as one of the things that needs to improve, primarily inconsistency of those connections. And then also the student environment and they broke that down to disrupt things or lack of respect, building the environment, and then also structural things like schedules or times that are. And the final one is consistency in the teacher alignment, a grading expectation.
Here are the quotes. Again, lots of good information. This team in front of you, along with their colleagues, took the time to really map this out. Staff, here's what they said needs to be improved.
Going along with what Ken said earlier, you had things that were, were well in and then proven as very good work well. So training in a coach, a faculty about our hiring and color, hurting IP materials and then having some injuries or for that. Increasing the model that came up quite a bit, improving accountability for students, staff, pay off behavior. Not only accountability for students, but it all goes to a quote about accountability and teacher and major level. And then improving support.
Okay. Again, here are the quotes. Now families, what needs to be improved?
And with families, these are in the order in which they were appeared in terms of numbers of comments. And you can see a couple of things to note is the movie in high school start times was was a very common response by our families. There was a lot about reading instruction and the part around improving parenting. Um, and the part around improving parent-teacher communication and parent engagement with both, uh, an improvement in consistency or teacher, the teacher in a way that, uh, the electronic methods of canvas and parenting were utilized, as well as finding more ways to engage parents with, with directly with their teachers.
Okay. Here are the quotes. Question three. This question's important, if you have a magic wand, because it'll tell us the prioritization, like what's most important. Students, here's what they said.
Their themes were a safe culture that allows them to explore learning and develop their competency. And then more consistency and teacher quality and advocacy and staff quality and advocacy. And then they want accountability and support for students struggling to be safe and respectful. So, again, it goes to that environment.
Here are the comments. Every single one, we've got comments to back these up. Staff.
As you can see, uh, reducing class size came up, uh, in the, uh, the, uh, schedule the third time, five thousand, uh, a movement. Uh, and then aims increasing professional development opportunities for staff. But as well, adding more support personnel, um, talked up and then.
Okay. Here are the quotes. Families and community, what's their priority?
Not to surprise anyone, uh, communities, upon all totals, the decrease of classes, the top one again, they're in the order in which they appear in frequency.
Okay. Quotes. And here's a nice summary, where you can see the question and what the top themes were for each group. We did the same thing for all of the three questions, board members, so you'll be able to see it. Panelists who's presented tonight, first of all, thank you for presenting tonight, but more importantly, thank you for your due diligence in going through this information and prioritizing it. So, board members, I know we're at a tight time crunch, but what I, one of the, one of the last pieces that I need from you is a word or phrase that you think will be essential in the new Beaverton mission statement. You're not crafting the mission statement tonight. You're giving us seedlings, little seedlings for us to use for that committee to craft the draft we'll bring back to you. So, a mission. Yes.
I, I apologize for interrupting you, Dr. Campbell, but we're out of time.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we can maybe find another time and space where we can provide that input to you. Cause we appreciate that opportunity to do so.
Absolutely.
And, and I'll work with, uh, our superintendent to see if we can't open that up in the next, uh, period of time, maybe add it to a school board meeting in the future.
Absolutely. Just wanted to be sure you knew you had an opportunity to participate. I look forward to it. Board members, thank you so much. We, I know we packed a lot in there. A lot has happened. And we're gonna continue to co-construct and build a dynamic vision and plan for improvement for Beaverton.
Thank you so much, Dr. Campbell. Great presentation. Really look forward to receiving the packet and taking a look at those comments and digging deeper, and there's so much there. It's very rich work, and we appreciate the opportunity to, to learn from you tonight.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Alright, you too. And with that, we'll close our work session, and we'll be back with the school board meeting in just two or three minutes, zero. Physically swallow it.
I know, yeah, I'm afraid so.
Yeah.
Especially you, it's hard, and having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
You, I never have a hard time hearing you. Really funny, your feet always, um, at the bottom. Yeah, you know. And, um,
Yeah, and.
Could you ask her? Actually widen the shot anymore, it's getting cut off.
My only copy of the. That's like shocking.
Yeah.
Can't widen the shot anymore, and you get cut off a little bit on the side.
Got it, we got something. Yeah, sorry for that. I, I didn't mean to be like rude, but like, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just was like. Hurt my back. Your back. I just got one at home. Maybe not.
I think it went to electronica, but I mean. It's the last one. Said they don't lean to the right. I won't be here by now. No, she wants you over here tighter.
Oh, thank you.
She's getting cut off by the camera.
Well, I just tried to shoot guys out, but you haven't been able to space to not.
I'm gonna give you my COVID hug. Well, it used to be, but it used to be consolidated. Changed order for the, um, slang name for somewhere in Africa.
Something sent to me, I just opened it up. What was it?
Fuck, it might be this, it's the electron version. Not this puppy, alright?
What was it?
I got.
Did you get something?
Oh, we got, thank you, notice somebody.
No. Have a collection.
That was a lot.
That's how they get bigger and bigger. I need a break.
I guess you're starting us up, right, Carl? It's cold in here.
There's no stop.
Alright, we are going to start our board meeting here tonight. So, welcome everyone. I call to order the Beaverton School Business Meeting for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we'll start with a roll call of the board. Uh, answer with President Greenberg.
Present.
Then Perls.
Present.
Eric Simpson.
Present.
Anita Guard.
Present.
Ugana N'Nai.
Present.
His presence. Becky Timchuck.
Here.
Tom Collet, I am present. And so we have all four board members. Um, and with a land acknowledgement, I would like to acknowledge that our district rests on the traditional land of the twelve in Kalafuya. We thank the ancestors of Kalafuya for being the original stewards and protectors of these lands. We are honored by the collective work of many indigenous nations, leaders, and families who demonstrate resilience, resistance, revitalization, healing, creativity. Uh, board members, any changes to the agenda tonight? And we will start here with our, uh, uh, superintendent's report. Uh, handing over to Dr. Balders.
Yep, and we actually have a student performance, so we have a, uh, tonight, we have a Beaverton High School acapella. In the direction of Kelly Hefty. So, I'm gonna invite the students right over to, uh, our phenomenal students to come up and, for a performance, and don't know where you like to be, to be best. Right, right, perfect, so.
My name is Kelly Hefty. I'm the director at Beaverton High School, and these are some of our members of concert choir. We're performing two songs for you tonight. The first is Java Jive, a nineteen twenties jazz music, about our favorite beverages, coffee and tea. And the second is All Ling Zine, which is a traditional Scottish folk song typically performed for New Year's, but we're gonna sing it a little early for you. We hope you enjoy.
Thank you so much. Beautiful music. Thank you for coming out tonight. Next, we have the superintendent comments.
Thank you, Kelly. And thank you for the students from Beardon High School and Acappella. This is just part of why, you know, just a workaround of education is so important for our, for our students. So, thank you for performing in, uh, this phenomenal, so then again, great. Our, this is our last board meeting of twenty twenty-two, you know what? And as I reflect back in terms of the, what I'm thankful for, for this past year, thankful for the kids, the students, and the resiliency through the trauma that they've experienced the last two years, two and a half years. The community for their continued support toward district. And then, you know, we passed a bond and operating levy just the last few months, believe it or not. So, we've done lots of heavy lift for our community, and the, the support is very appreciated. To our staff for their relentless efforts to meet the needs of our kids each and every day. And to our board, for steady guidance and support, uh, through these really difficult times we've had last few years. So, with great appreciation, thank you. Last week, I was able to meet with the large school district superintendents, we also need leaders to discuss our current service level and what our public schools need to maintain, to maintain our current status. We will need to continue to press our needs to our elected officials. As they continue to frame the budget, as we start this long session coming up pretty soon. The quality education model that we've spoken to, um, yeah, I've been around Oregon, or been around education for thirty-three years, almost like folklore. Almost like folklore, when you look at a quality education model. And, um, it's over eleven billion for a quality education model. That means it's a prototypical school, in that, uh, what we expect our schools to be funded to be successful. Our current level, our estimates are just right over about nine point five. It's about nine point five-two is what we're gonna be expecting out of Salem. So, we, we want small class size, and I think the board and the community that was here present, we heard what our community wants, uh, based on our strategic plan efforts. We all want smaller class sizes. And the need to support the kids and our faculties to be successful in, in our classes. We need to really work in partnership with our BEA and OSEA partners to ensure that we press Salem. Do we press Salem to advocate for what we have to do to meet the needs of our kids? We saw some kids perform here just a few minutes ago. That's our future. You are our future. And this board and staff around here, around ours, district, we have forty-two hundred staff members fighting for you and making sure that we provide the best learning opportunity for you to define your own success. And that's something that we need to work together in partnership to continue to advocate in Salem, to continue to press. Because we have a lot of new elected officials. We have a lot of new effective elected officials to press, to make sure people understand the why. The why we are so passionate when we go to Salem to advocate, to meet with our electives. And to have your parents to go out and advocate for you. Elected officials would rather listen to you than to me. So, I look forward to the opportunities ahead as we work through that. So, again, thank you, Chair Collet, for allowing me some comments.
Thank you, Dr. Balders. Um, next up, we will have the public comment section of our meeting. Um, and I note that we have received written public comments. Board members, appreciate your comments, and thank each and every one of you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. Thank you for attending the school board meeting with us today. We're grateful for your presence and the opportunity to receive your input. One of our district's greatest strengths is community involvement. As we know, your involvement comes from a place of caring for our students, families, community, and staff. As we know, your involvement comes from a place of caring for our students, families, community, and staff. Please know that board members do not respond directly to testimony, but we are paying close attention to your comments. You know, it can be difficult to testify in public, but we are sincerely interested in hearing your comments. Best that all present model respectful behavior to provide an open space in which a variety of viewpoints and perspectives can be shared. Uh, with that in mind, a few guidelines. Our comments do not allow for the specific naming of school personnel. Personal matter should be dealt with either through the complaint process or by contacting the principal or central office staff. So I've made a little error tonight and I apologize for this, but we, uh, should have our labor partners first from the Beaverton Education Association. Uh, please accept my apologies, President Lindsay Ray. I will have, uh, your comments and then we'll jump back to what we were talking about earlier in a couple of minutes. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We, I'm sorry to have a useful rest. Uh, I'll work on it. Good evening, Superintendent Balduris, Chair Collette, and members of the school board, the director, Mrs. Lindsay Ray. My name is old, nasty, but apparently it's great. Uh, I'm the fellow superintendent of all there is in my comments since it's the last for me of twenty-fourty-two. Uh, and sometimes we're looking back, really take a critical view of the function. I want to thank every single educator in BSD, including our certified staff, our classified staff administrators, for being credible for the rise in educating our students. Engaging and honoring our students and just showing up for every day for the last year. I want to thank community members for their generosity and working alongside us to support students, students, staff, and schools. And I want to thank our students and families for being flexible, for showing up, for staying with us as we all work with the better. When we return in twenty twenty-three, it is my sincere hope that we continue to focus on mental health. As I mentioned here before, both students and staff are struggling with the impacts of the past years. I hope we address that in intentional and meaningful ways. This is, who is not working and we need to think outside the box to create ways to support staff and students. I also look forward to the continued development of the BSD plan in the new year. And the number of the district have a true sense of direction and a line of goals that have been thoughtfully developed by of prior stakeholders. Put it where that and continual reactive. Uh, it would be nice to have a sense of accounting after years of what feels like just trying to pass through this whole year. And before the long winter break, uh, again, I'll echo Superintendent Balduris's message just like last week, uh, about the generosity of our community partners who donated meals and grocery cars for families in business for the world file, um, the schools are out of session. My sincere hope that we can all take time over winter break to find those best and functional and kind of family and chosen family that work very important, but it is safe. And it is imperative for all of us, including our students, to recognize the value of best.
Thanks, Lindsay. All right, now I'm going to go back to what we were talking about earlier in terms of guidelines for the public comments. So, um, a few guidelines to keep in mind. Uh, our comments do not allow for the specific naming of school personnel. Personal matter should be dealt with either through the complaint process or by contacting the principal or central office staff. If a school personnel is named during a comment period, it will stop your comments and ask you to refrain from naming the person. If it occurs the second time, you will be asked to end your comments. Commenters are allowed to comment on any subject. The previous restriction on commenting only on agenda items before the board has been removed. Everyone has two minutes to provide testimony to the board. A timer will be set and will go off at the two-minute mark. If you continue talking beyond the two minutes, I will ask you to end your comments. To ensure fair treatment for all commenters, this will be enforced uniformly, regardless of the subject matter, point of view, or whether you have finished your prepared comments. I understand it can be difficult to provide comments within this shortened time period and recommend that any comments you did not have the time to provide us orally be sent to the board in an email or paper form. Please do not speak or interrupt the meeting outside of the two-minute period provided for your testimony. If this occurs, you will be asked to leave or remove from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We look forward to hearing your comments. And we'll start off with, uh, Selena, who is joining us virtually. Uh, Selena, are you there?
I am.
Excellent. Let me get, um, the timer started and then I will let you know when to start here. Right, whenever you're ready.
Okay. My name is Selena Seaman and I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts with you this evening. I am a product of the Beaverton School District and have been an educator with BSD since nineteen ninety-nine, having worked all those years at the middle school level. As you can see, the investment I have in this community runs deep in my veins. I am here to acknowledge the Ezra funds that have sustained the school support specialists at the secondary level for the last two years and am currently here to implore the continued funding of such positions. The social and emotional needs of our staff and students are innumerable. Post-pandemic, we are seeing behaviors from frankly humanity that are far from exemplary. The need for these positions to exist in order to help students and staff with their social and emotional needs is immense. Self-awareness, relationship skills, social awareness, self-management, and responsible decision-making are the key competencies that school support specialists focus on to positively empower students. The time is now to support students with these skills. Our students are inundated with adverse behavioral examples from media and beyond. Our students are impressionable youth that need to be provided a higher standard of behavior and school support specialists directly helping students learn and practice these skills. We want our students to leave their K-12 experience in Beaverton being global thinkers, kind human beings that lead positive and productive lives and with the skillset to persevere through life's challenges with grace and knowledge. The following examples show the various tasks that I've been engaged in over the last two years due to your gracious funding and investment. Restorative conversations with students, restorative conversations with students and teachers, coaching teachers, coaching students, leading professional development, being the cell committee lead, collaborating with counselors, stepping in as acting administrator when needed, helping with student behaviors, helping with re-entry meetings, weekly cell videos I make to share with staff, supporting staff with their cell needs, collaborating with academic coaches, meeting with admin team, providing a consistent experience for students and staff, serving on the behavior, health, and wellness team, and running a wellness room this year that to date has served over two hundred eighty-three students with an eighty-five percent success rate. I implore you to continue funding the school support specialists at the secondary level. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Selena. Um, next up, we have, uh, we have Vihon. Vihon, are you here? Um, can you come, come up to the, the dais? We have microphones over there for you. I think if you press the button, it should. Allow you to.
Oh, hello. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Vihon Corr. Uh, I'm, I'm actually an adult today, adult, adult. And, um, I'm also a boy scout with a shoot, so hey. And I was just, uh, as you know, like, uh, I'm getting scouting, uh, making a difference on, you know, like the the daily activities like in, in high school or like any school.
Uh, Vihon, we don't answer questions during this time. We just take input. And if you wanted to send that to us like in an email, we could be happy to work on getting you a reply. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah. Good job.
And we have one more mentor, Kristen. Just not great.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Um, I am here speaking on behalf of the families and communities that are affected by the onslaught in the bathroom. And we just wanted to thank you all, um, the superintendent, the long-range, the department, the board for being effective to community input. And we fully support option two and the better balances of current and future enrollment of both schools, while providing immediate relief of overcrowding and onslaught, which we vote the JCP policy factors and were drafted set out for this.
Thank you. And with that, I think we're, we've completed our public testimony for the night. We're going to move on to the consent agenda next. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the board, um, approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Well, it is proper, it's been properly moved and seconded, uh, to approve the consent agenda. Um, I will take a roll call of board members and you can answer with aye, nay, or abstain when I call your name. Uh, Susan Greenberg.
Aye.
Thank you for this.
Aye.
Eric Simpson.
Aye.
You need a guard.
Aye.
Ugana Nenaya.
Aye.
Becky Timchuk.
Aye.
Uh, aye, and, uh, consent agenda passes unanimously. Uh, and next up, we have our school reports. First up is Cedar Mill Elementary School with Principal Chamberlain.
Superintendent Wes, really great to be here tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm here with Amy Chamberlain, who's been with Cedar Mill. She's been a little there shape. Cedar Mill is a vibrant, wonderful, brilliant community and, uh, Amy is a big reason for that. So really excited to have her here to tell the good night.
Thank you for the opportunity for letting me come and highlight some really good and healthy ideas here. So, um, some of the bright spots that I want to share with you tonight are really about the, it's an emotional way this evening about returning from the school, kind of been known of the last few years and this year, it's been so wonderful to be back in person full-time, um, without all of the restrictions of the beginning of our work to highlight our students and build that sense of student identity, of student belonging. One of the highlights I wanted to talk about tonight is how we revamped our leadership program. In the past, uh, we had a program called the Cedar Mill Lumberjack Leaders and we have typically that terminology and often the focus and the volume of change we know. And the emphasis for that in relation to the amazing team and leadership to every school and what they're doing. There are a variety of school leadership teams. I will list all of them for you tonight. We have a kindness club. We have a student body reading team. We have a music leadership team or a core gathering team. A BIPOC leadership team. Five are giving up their lunch and lunch to do really important work at Cedar Mill. And one of the exciting things that we're seeing come out of that is now they're willing to bring that down to our lower levels to really bring that to the voice of the community. So I wanted to highlight that for you tonight. That is run primarily of, who's your head of fire, she's a coach who, uh, he and our counselor, our counseling intern, went through all of our fifth grade classrooms with the community of the year. Did eight lessons on what does it mean to be a community builder? Because they all play a role in that. And then from there, they were able to build their individual leadership team to impact our community. The other thing I wanted to highlight tonight is with that sense of belonging, we really are emphasizing to keep kids in classrooms. I've seen a shift in Cedar Mill since I came five years ago, um, where teachers are being equipped with the SEL skills and strategies to support students being in the classroom. Um, our behavior, health, and wellness team is really instrumental in that too. And we are committed to being hands by advice and by raises, trauma-informed, and really support our students and our staff. And one of the really powerful things that came out of our way and between a couple of weeks ago was when I seen staff, of course, we want to support our staff that are primarily focused on students. Staff asking, keep the focus on our students because we want our kids in our classrooms. Um, some of that, like thinking about some of the data on our data profile that might not look like it's representative of keeping kids in class, but we do have some reporting that are applied. But oftentimes, those, uh, sort of things that are applied, when we need time to work with our staff and work with our families, coming up with a better plan so that students can feel successful and be celebrated in the classroom. Uh, one of the other things I want to highlight are the health and wellness team. We have moved beyond just our required number for that team. And last year, we started making it a truly multidisciplinary team. We have a multilingual department representative, our academic coach has been represented, and we have our school group, our school faculty, who have required number. We also had our learning specialist. And so it's really important that we're looking at the whole child when we're discussing students each week and how we can support them and their classroom. Okay, well, we're working on this here. Based on the staff input data and then also looking at how we can work to strengthen our practices and vertical alignment, and vertical alignment. We are using writing as our focus and are being able to do that. Writing is multidisciplinary in itself. We know that with our reading, our writing, our math, science, our social science, the kids can be better writers and can communicate written in written language. They're going to be more successful. For the first time that's been in Cedar Mill, we've been able to build in an extra collaboration time for all of our teachers, ones every three or four weeks. And they work closely with the principal, our academic coach, and their multilingual department representative. We are also working in staff development days with that being good our articulation and calibrating after living in isolation over the last few years. It was really important that we bring that back. The other, um, important thing that we're working on this year is parenting agents. When I came to Cedar Mill five years ago, the most prominent work we've seen in Cedar Mill with the community, all of our schools that had impacted by the pandemic. And I, that is something that we're beginning at Cedar Mill, building back our whole tier base, thinking about how we can reimagine what we do as a whole community and not just falling back into past practice because we want to learn from what we've experienced over the last few years, being very intentional of that. And I think, almost over twenty-five minutes, I'll stop there.
Questions from the board? Uh, Becky?
Um, I'm very intrigued by your, that you have found a way to cobble together a built-in collaboration time. So could you please elaborate on, on how you found in your experience to build in, uh, that collaboration time? Cause we know how valuable that is.
It is very valuable. It's been a big challenge, especially in a school, our side of it, and it's a colleague who's been wanting to do that. I think it was a combination of the right number of classrooms and also a behavior, health, and wellness team that also is willing to, so when our, when our teacher, the way they through the classroom, our counselor and a specific that, so they're company and they're pushing to the classroom to release the teachers twice a week. They give them an SEL lesson and then the teachers don't have to prepare anything. They, it's, it's only about thirty-five minutes, but we're being able to fit in twice a week, but it's so powerful and that's how we're able to do it. And so looking at how we play our schedule, it was just the perfect mix of how this title came together.
I just want to commend you for thinking outside of the box and for finding ways to meet the needs of your, of your students and your staff.
I have to commend my colleagues also because it's been able to be larger by a bit, but thinking harder, not thinking harder, but to think smarter. So I want to also give credit to those colleagues.
Susan Danug, Susan Danugonit.
Thank you so much for coming today. I know it's not easy and it can feel a little intimidating, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to thank you for putting, putting child first and looking at the whole child. I think that is just crucial. And I just, again, want to thank you for that and also making mental health a priority at your school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Chamberlain, um, for what you're doing and how you're utilizing your behavioral and wellness team. I appreciate that. Good job. Thank you very much. Uh, my question to you is when I look at your data, I do not see, um, data for, um, black students, um, Asian, Pacific Islander. I only see, um, data for white students. Is there a reason for that?
I think it probably has to do with the number of students. Yeah, in terms of having a, having the, the amount of students to, um, put their on the, on.
How do you track the progress of your artist to that? What's data is not reported here?
You know, I, I, I guess a little bit, and the data isn't important, but in the report, they're not scored. But the, the principal and the team, can you speak in terms of how you just track students? Because I think the question is, why aren't they there? But we do care of all kids. Want to make sure that's clear that there, that we care about all kids.
And here are other data, data reports that do, that are a little differently in the therapy, health, and wellness referral forums. We ask for the demographic information, so we're using that as a reference to maybe do tracking that. So it's an internal process. If we show up on this report, we're presenting, and we all do report that three times a year, it's going to be a relevant one.
Okay, I would love to see that, whatever it's reported. And then the next question I have. Okay, I would love to see that, whatever it's reported. And then the next question I have, which always interests me, is the participation rates. Um. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, it went up. It went from twenty-eight percent in eighteen, nineteen, then twenty twenty-one, it went down to nine percent. Fantastic. And then it went back up to thirty-five percent. Just wondering if you could do something about that, you know, percentage to bring it down. No pressure, no, it's not a question, just a comment. So, just, you know.
It is.
Not a stat. Students missing fewer days, fewer than ten days of school, went to thirty-five percent. And then number of class days missed due to suspension and expulsion was six point five. You know, I just want you to keep an eye on that and, um, just hoping that, that, that number can get better. Cause it got better in twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I don't know what happened in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Just saying, you know, keep an eye on that and hopefully next time, it will be a better number. Thank you so very much.
Could you, we can speak.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yes, I think it too has to do with, um, with the twenty twenty, twenty-one, what we're, that we were in, um.
Online.
Same video.
Video.
This is like. I remember all the activities, um, speaking many times. And then even in the project, coming back from video, there were a lot of students who may have been placed in, um, it hadn't been placed in a program to, and so my opinion about in regard to some of that convention data have to do with the time that we need. I don't apply suspension, um, wrestling is something we want to use to pay for when those positions to pay is done in the best of that, in your child. And so I think that, and we are very mindful and, um, I appreciate you bringing that point up that we are being, you know, more mindful as we can be more. By the way.
Um, I think one of the first things I was going to point out was the extra collaboration time. So as a system, Beaverton School District as a system, it's something that I dream about, like figuring out, helping all of our schools act that puzzle of how can we provide that collaboration time for each of our schools, for our staff, because it is so crucial, um, in the work that's done. And, um, I heard you speak to how you also, another point, I heard you speak to how you, um, value that the collaboration and then the input from your staff. Um, and even your students, and it shows in your, like, teacher reporting that they contribute and that they're being heard, and then families too. Um, and I appreciated you kind of, um, talking about how you're building back that volunteering and those community events. So that's, that builds those relationships with our kids and families. Um, and I also was, um, loved how you have all these different clubs and spaces for kids to feel included and belonging and that they come with some training, like the fifth graders having that, um, community builders, becoming community builders and taking ownership of their own schools. So I think, thank you for all your work and the work that your staff is doing to create spaces of belonging for all students.
I wanted to also say, that was a big, uh, that was actually a contentious point that came to our work last year. And the, our families to help them, and I was just to help them, and it's been really beautiful to be at unfold. And I just wanted to be to one thing, something that's hitting on the mind of our student body reading team, and I hope that we can speak to this. Um, me and the guy today, they're so focused on providing equitable opportunities for each other. And one thing that's hitting on my mind is kids with dietary restrictions. How can you do something different? So that there are options that are in cafeteria for every student, but how can we work in the school to make sure that the kids who have dietary restrictions have access to the food that they're able to eat? They are so actively minded and thinking about our spirit day survey, and they brought up on their phone, knowing for me, this survey we're sending out is not in any language. We have twenty-six languages represented in our student body. And those are the things that are on their mind. It's so powerful. Makes you want to get a little emotional because they care so deeply about each other. And I, I also wanted to say something that I should be saying before is that kind of in the classroom curriculum, we're seeing it unfold. The kindness concept, it comes from the students, that's what we should be focusing on. And so it's just been really beautiful. I, it was a little thing where I hope we can continue this program, um, with the staff support that helps to run it. Um, we'll find a way to make it happen. And actually, if that coach and really his channel and keep him out.
Yeah.
Let me know if there's any questions.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for, um, elaborating on, because that was in our minds when this curriculum started this year, to hear back how it's working. So thank you for bringing that to us. You know, it's really good to hear that it makes a difference. No, it's not just that we are spending this money because budgetary issues and stuff. It is actually making a difference. And I like the part that you teach the students to be a part of the community. You know, and that's really great. Thank you so much.
It is their school. And I know that there are a lot of schools, um, and not to say that you're not, um, heavily challenging the leaders, but there's a difference. But that's the only way I know how to say it. And I think a lot of it comes down to, we're all speaking the same, same language. We are really promoting that kindness and it's very possible. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yeah. Thank you for the presentation tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys. We're going fast.
Uh, next up, we have, uh, Principal Laburn from Five Oaks.
It is my pleasure to introduce Kelly Laburn, Colonel of Five Oaks. Kelly was hired in July of twenty twenty, very challenging, correct, to begin as principal. And during the time that she had been principal, she demonstrated standing capable leadership.
Well, thank you so much for having me today. Or Jerkless, if you can hold there. I really appreciate that you talked about what my favorite place is. Uh, so our vision of that though is that I do believe on track for the next school with a co-secondary level. What that means is that they have the skills necessary to walk through school the first day of ninth grade and be like, I got this. No, we don't. Right? Um, you can see them at first, make sure that those are kids working together to, to, uh, create a social project where they are staying. We're all engaged in those, doing something that's, um, we're designing the, uh, a three D model of, of that area. They're living in the demographic, they're researching the human environment, but they're all in a different vision of the end of it. I really wanted to highlight our story of practice that I wrote, but I feel like this is working really, the biggest game, we need to act like a pandemic. Um, it's me back. We had to do a creative set on what does it mean to be in those rooms? We just party with mine and the best of times, let alone those. So, um, if you look at some of our data, our charter, we're going really fundamentally chartering our health teachers, our health educators. Uh, my journey includes the, the twenty twenty data on there because we really remember it early, and it's pretty beautiful. Um, we can see that some of our mental health concerns of the increase, pretty, 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 uh, pandemic. We instituted what we call community building days, which is, you know, we part of everything for a couple of hours. Um, we can stay right now for two hours. We're going to spend time together and we're going to be a team meeting. We're to make sure that we follow your definitions for words that are important to us. They were said. Or, or. Y'all understand what it means. Um, so we pause the same time to do that, but we also just, we also do projects together on those days. We make sure that we're actually doing something needed or supposed to, um, the next occasion for, uh, you know, our academic tasks. And really helps us, something other, um, we create a lot of systems to play, to help support kids, not to back them, but more fully knowing that it's not safe, not. And that's going to be the focus. It came back last year with the leaders that, that none of us have really ever seen before as a principal group. And, um, that was really where we needed much, what we support and how do we get to know what the real root of the issue is, right? So, um, we need to know that our school support specialist, Dr. Aket, and it goes just all our teachers, you thought all of the PB that I had planned for the year, just said, we're going to take care of this, we care of other. And I think that says that first of that. We're also growing our leadership program for the future. We want to make sure that they have working age knowledge. So, um, Stephen Williams, Rob, and some friends that I would like, um, on our expectations, our qualities. Um, they plan all of our activities, spirit days. It's really a beautiful thing to see kids that, like, hey, I want to gain charge of that. As soon as they have that level of ownership, that they can hear, calm down to them. And then they know their friend, like, what are you asking? Really great. Um, you are working on a lot of things though on the next slide. So we're rebranding On Track, where it can be high school revenue. And we talk about color rating, no, for where you've got, that is a really far out place to go, right? So we're talking about high school readiness. We're going to do their own data things, which means they're monitoring our progress through Shandys and through synergy and all those places, making sure that they understand, like, oh, I really was absent. Four times in a month. What does that do? My, my grades, what is that like for a time? Um, we have them step in our role when we do progress monitoring. We took our advisory program, we started to lead our team. So they have the same as I did with teachers for years in the world. So the stuff that they're learning, sixth grade, um, what characters long it builds in the seventh grade, goes in the eighth grade. But they always have that one day of stage, so they can ram all the time with the same teacher and they know about. Um, the journey we are. I, I sneak my guess for lack of a better word, is they need to be. Well, you need to have attendance here and court work. So really need to, that went down to the basics. Um, and, um, all of that pieces are on fact work, professional development, our secret goal launch, uh, to be seen. And then that is the data of other things.
Questions from the board? Susan?
What I heard through this whole presentation is you put kids first. So thank you so much for that. Um, I, I have a question about mental health. Because, um, you know, I know that at that age is when a lot of kids start showing signs of it. They may be more absent and not coming to class or not going to certain classes. And I'm just wondering how that's dealt with.
Uh, we have a lot of different places that I think behavior health and wellness is the main thing to prioritize in kids. Uh, I work for a teacher for the, uh, a direct app to refer students to their internal club. So it goes to your counselor, you have a behavior problem, bump up, they want us to refer them, um, they're going to have a team for all of them. They didn't show up for a couple of days. Let's see what happened. Um, so we, we have folks who are homeless regularly, our counselors are big, some amazing human beings along with our social worker and, um, they know, they know really quickly, I'd say. You might notice that too, I've been here for a couple of days, they didn't give me all this. So I think it really needs those relationships, not just with our students or families. Um, and then crack analysis around our, 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 our.
I have a follow-up question related to mental health, to see the statistics about, um, suicide, suicidal ideations, um, you know, was shocking to see, but I'm glad to see it. I mean, it sounds weird to say, but I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront and making us look at that because, I mean, it starts in middle school. It can start even younger than that. So I appreciate that as well.
I think what's important for me to know in that data is it's also an opportunity for our kids to be, you know, developed. I think that speaks to last year, our whole system, and I know we prioritize, uh, we care more about just a reason.
Yeah, thank you.
Becky, then Ugana?
Yeah, I would just like your, um, and thank you for sharing your data, but just your personal observation. Um, I have the opportunity to be in a middle school a couple of hours a week and have been doing so for the last six years. Just my, I'm not being a professional educator, last year to this year, as far as, um, the students' engagement, discipline, uh, staff interaction. Can you just tell me in, in your observation as a principal, what you've seen the difference between last fall and this fall?
Oh, it's, it's almost all those advantages, honestly. Um, last year, the kids come in and we were really excited and go back and we're like, we haven't been online in a long time. Um, and they, we had to reach each other, the space. Right? And we're doing it by saying, don't be more than three. You know, the one way, the kind of, so we know each other. Kind of go, really hard to teach about the community community. And I think our teacher did a great job being there. Um, it's a lot of mine, their phones or, or whatever. And I think it's funny, you know, really have to bring them in, like, put a little away from the screen when there's somebody in the eye and have a conversation. And even really small things at Five Oaks, like, uh, we had a, a one-way hallway. So that they can't face each other. I don't think they're incredibly, really like, so good a sign.
Oh, amazing.
They can't help each other on some podcasts. We're very helpful. Also, it's really, it's really nice to watch them now to get back.
It's really cool.
Uh, Ugana?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your presentation. Um, I love the way that you instill confidence in our students and, um, how you prioritize their mental health. So thank you so very much. Um, I'm gonna bring you back to your, um, data. Your participation rates. Um, I must commend that the numbers improved tremendously. Um, we went from six fifty-six point five, number of class days missed in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. That went down to two sixty-one point five. So thank you very much. At two sixty-one point five, that is still quite high. I appreciate the change. I appreciate the progress that we have made. I hope that that number improves over time. Um, we went from students missing class due to suspension and expulsion, one one six to seventy-five. That's amazing. Thank you. But still high. And then, um, the percentage of students missing fewer than ten days of school was fifty-seven percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. So that was, you know, higher than the previous years. Um, can you let, tell me why that went higher than the previous years? That's the only data that is out of, out of place with your participation rates. All the other numbers are beautiful. They're not where we wish them to be, but they're definitely where they used to be. So that is a huge leap. But I was wondering what happened that made that go back up to fifty-seven percent?
I think a lot of us in that, in that is, uh, not the COVID part. We have kids, you know, that are floating around, they have a positive case or they were closed, really like. They perhaps, those on the, on, or, I think that a lot of our admitted data isn't that, that last year. We also had at one point, we were one of the female school that activated, we have, we have these numbers, you, you know, that we want to. I think that's what a lot of this, and I think that, you know, I read this really great article on, oh, yeah, I wasn't going to quote it, but um, that said that data, equally data has a better. Okay. So I should put it in the way, what's going on with those two? Who else do you need to talk to? What other families to report in our conversation? I mean, we have to, um, ask what's going on and, and, you know, we're going to, uh, figure out what's going on. I am a big proponent of the whole town east, right, you can't, you have to do this in society. Everybody is a laborer. So, um, I think this is a good opportunity for, maybe to begin, I mean, we knew that our data would be perfect, but we're looking for improvement every year, and I think.
Thank you. It is way better than it used to be. So thank you very much.
Ugana?
He, um, I think I am one of the biggest, uh, Five Oak fans, um, and cheerleaders for the work. I've been in the cafeteria volunteering, I've been there volunteering in different spaces. And I actually was like, just amazed by the one-way hallway, like that, just the little, little big things that your staff and you have come up with to allow for students to really be in a space, in a safe way. Um, I've also, um, you know, I watched you play bingo in the cafeteria with all the students, um, which could be. um, which could be mayhem, but when somebody would get a little rally, a little, you know, I don't know how, I can't think of the word right now, but like, you'd be like, you were so respectful with them and you could have a conversation with them and calm it back down. And, um, I witnessed, um, with our own family and with other families and just the love, um, that the counselors and the staff have for the students and how they really do know every single student, um, almost by name. And when I'm volunteering and I, um, in the hallways, they're like, hey, so and so by name, you know, um, how's your brother? Or hey, so and so like, and it's constant kids. And I mean, there's like hundreds of kids in the hallway all at once in there. I'm just hearing people in the hallway talking to kids and naming them and naming their families or their friends or, um, and correcting kids as they're doing things. But like in this respectful way that, um, and as things happen in middle schools, I know it's been challenging. Um, I've heard from multiple schools, but, um, the schedule hasn't allowed for the collaboration that they were used to. Um, and you all have found ways to, I don't know, encrypt the, we need little spaces here and there to really collaborate around students. Cause what I've experienced is that you do know your students and, um, I just, I'm really thankful for all the work. And also I've experienced from like all the parent communication that's so clear and very direct about what's happening, what's happened. And this is how we've addressed it. Um, and seeing that there's the love and the restorative process alongside consequences that are, um, aligned with some of our rules that we have to follow as a district. But also, um, that restorative space and love that kids are, it's wrapped around. And I think that advisory time where you've stopped everything, um, and really worked on community, um, shows. And it's, um, in your hallways and in the cafeteria and in the classroom. So thanks for all that work.
Eric?
My mom was a teacher there in the eighties. So you know, I know you've only been there two years, but, um, how's your new learning spaces working? Um, cause I know in the old days it was really loud and it was hard to teach and, you know, teachers weren't happy about that. So any information on that, that bond program?
There's some crazy stories about mocking serious class.
Yeah.
I think they're pretty new to me, especially coming from a building of those other construction. Um, um, you know, teams really love the collaboration space. So within each sort of, sort of remove their priority and raise the, I thought some kids working on math today. And then the total area that we have. So the teams are really loving their big rooms, uh, the, you know, technology and all that stuff. But it's the little spaces that are actually making it. Not work, but you know, a specialist on reading or somebody about math, they were having a very high level of math session. Or, you know, I was in the other day, she was for, uh, that dream. So they have like a big measuring tape out, so he was painting a lot of shit around. Having this space like that and still not just looking at kind of longer. I think it's great, but I want to end it.
Anita?
First of all, I want to thank you. Uh, you guys are doing all that you can do. And I love the fact that you said that you want the students to be ready for high school. Um,
Sorry.
So thank you, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. Um, but when I look at the, the numbers, right? Um, so the school, like forty five percent is economically disadvantaged. Only thirteen point eight percent students are ready for it in math. Eighth grade math, same thing for science and stuff. My question to you is not what you can do, but what can be as the more the community can do for your school?
So many things right now we're working directly with few of the members, but he thinks of her, he thinks of her. So many of us, I don't know, but, um, the students are coming and helping the teacher. It's all different subjects for that.
Right.
And I would love to have areas come in, any board members, whoever's been at Berwick Trail and volunteer in the section. You know, sometimes it's, it's a little, you know, really tiny. Everything else is up there. But a teacher with thirty, with, you know, I D P and, and I have a board and eventual leadership needs, it's really hard. Always time and that probably in a box to the students. I don't want anybody to lost time to have a damn of kids. They're pretty cool. So I think that's really the biggest part of, I would love, you know, like anybody else to, to figure out how we can, you know, think about our students who are maybe, maybe came back from the pandemic with different reasons. So, um, I think it's a real student. We aren't able to engage. And we're, we're having the greatest time in school. And then we throw them back in with a pretty complex schedule, a lot of resources, a lot of things straight out of the door. And we don't have the capacity right now to provide all the scores for students. I'm not already in such that the guilty people. So, um, we tried a lot of different things, but.
Yeah. Thank you. And as everybody know that we have a lot of new legislators. And we are trying to do legislative advocacy so that we can get more funding for the schools. So this is, this tells us that we do need more funding, you know? We can do a lot more than we are actually doing in our schools. So I hope some new legislator is values education is listening today and wants to go and speak for our schools and say, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you for the excellent presentation and I echo many of the compliments of my colleagues up here tonight. All right, next up we have an update on technology. Steve Langford's gonna come up and talk to us.
So we can order. And then both of us, Steve Langford, our chief information officer from the district. Yeah.
Make it green.
Darker green.
To take that one too.
With the opportunity to report for the on the work. Yeah, the report here. I would like to pre-mention things for any questions she has. Um, the section we showed, provided on the staff of the agency. The report began and ends with the technology solution deployed. And the services is provided. The three results on A one, you know, whatever the high level of satisfaction for your technology. We have, um, to help them accomplish their work. And then how that's at on the last page, and it is particularly important because it shows that we have a team that provides exceptional support, uh, because, um, at the end of, of this ticket, there are three questions on the, we need to set at the operating answer. And those, uh, how well, uh, we have a timely, timely with operation. I mean, true. The professionalism and throughout that process and do we can? And we have thousands of tickets. And we do it. And on all three items, just or over ninety different, good or excellent on their work. So we have a team of dedicated professionals, uh, that understand questions, report. And they can make work of their practices. One of our largest challenges. All schools, um, we face, they actually globally is securing our citizens as cyber attacks. In close, it's given. A client target for ransomware, malicious criminal activity. That's designed to use product within the process. It's to fuel our personal and organizational data. Over the operations. We're in the final phase of our two thousand and twenty period of year. When we receive the final report in the coming weeks, we will begin designing. Very, it's, it's our practices. We have received preliminary results and, um, there are many areas where we are aligned with best practices and, um, our practice is effective. Or, uh, there are other areas though where our practices are not as far on that security matrix. And our work will be to a meaningful. Thank you for mentioning. Protection of the. And then finally, I'd like to mention our work, uh, related to thousand twenty twenty fourteen bond. Out of us to do an digital transformation. We were able to modernize our technologies of them. Phone systems, enterprise wireless network, but the majority of the funds went to data devices. And we were able to add eight of our to do few rounds of student devices. And they were so critical, um, when we had to go to public. And I auditioned these to me, but unlike any digital. They would do the work, um, to allow us to provide student devices. We are in the evaluation phase because our community in the state had the twenty twenty two bond, which allows us to that word, but we're in the evaluation phase for the next round of student. We began this project by surrounding families and staff to understand what each were most important. Um, as we began looking for new devices. On that, maybe invited vendors again, present as an evaluation team. Uh, building, building staff, IT staff, IP staff. To make sure that we had an understanding of not only our phone impact with the devices, but also how they the ability and the capability, um, parts, availability, placing, total cost of ownership, integration into our IT enterprise. We're now in the days where we are in the most fun days of our parts of our, of our shack of I on the technical. Down and rebuilds. Understand how could they intend to prepare the device, what parts of the device might break the most? Um, again, on parts, how much did we pay for the cost, or that we can start to get cost of? And so that way we select the device best to for our teaching and learning mission and also make sure that we devices over time. We anticipate the damage direction to be done in the next couple of months. And, uh, I suppose, I suppose, sorry, all of twenty foot three in middle school and elementary school, you were with me. Number of twenty twenty four. So that I'm happy to answer.
Uh, Susan?
First of all, lovely thing you say. Um, so my question is, um, about accessibility. I know that, you know, some teachers have had curriculum they want to access. But because of the needed security systems that we have built up, that it's difficult to align that with curriculum that teachers want to get that may not be from a secure site. I mean, that's what I've heard from teachers in the past, like math teachers want to use certain curriculum and want their teach, their kids to go to that. But because it's not necessarily secure, it's difficult for them to utilize those. That's what I've heard. Yes, now maybe.
Yeah, I think, I think the strategy is to change.
Yeah.
Um, some of these changes that we had to make was maybe our best practice is to, 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 and our understanding of, um, some other changes, so are driven by changing cyber change. And, um, for us to be able to actively demonstrate. For example, multi backdoor authentication, creating tech for the code. I'm something that, that is a very good practice. And I'm trying to share is that, hey, we're going to need to demonstrate, we're going to, that we lower our risk. Um, one of those changes that I would do.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone sees all of her. So we, and I know it's one of the things that's a change. Better security. You know, so I'll talk about that concept. Well, that I just handed over, um, access to your shit. So, uh, the team worked really hard, uh, to maybe make that impact. Uh, a number of ways to build assets as offered any. Is. I could, yeah, I shouldn't say, I'm afraid that we want to try this tomorrow or hit one of these. And then have that ready. Now we need a little bit more time because you do not have the building, oh. Every building has a, you're also happy to go read, and release a remote and help. So I think, uh, what you're describing in the, 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 on school system is we had to and we are attempting to look for ways. That's the, but we're not impacting, uh, us.
That was exactly where that was going for. So thank you for understanding. Appreciate that.
Um, Eric?
And we, um, close the digital equity gap because I know that, um, we have great devices and the bonds give us access to more devices. But I know at the start of COVID, we had some connectivity issues with certain families. But, um, it looked like you're going on offense and I'm taking care of that, but I just wanted to hear from you.
Yes, um, generally mentioned, uh, due to the bond and our ability to devices and those, we cannot work. So we were at a very mature point, uh, when the pandemic came, when they had, which was very different position than they were. I remember challenges that were around device, but not having a connectivity. And so there is a right, we didn't want to work. Um, multi, that is used for employees to make sure that we had a pay. And the situation are still available. So it's not to the same degree that's for example, our, our, um, using the unkeeping devices. We're back to a pre pandemic practice for the devices are new. Full and platform, but not necessarily go home with the keys. So on that, uh, the, the difference. So our, um, but we have um, we do have multiple ways to.
Hi, thank you for all your work. Um, it was incredible to go into, um, the pandemic, having devices. Many districts didn't have that, um, those getting more devices. Um, I'm thinking about two things. One is with the elementary students not being able to take their devices home and some of them not having it's, I know we give them books to read, but, um, I know like my middle schooler will read from her device, um, at night. But for people going to bed, sometimes a book. And so I wonder for some of our homes that don't have as much access to books or the library, then, um, how do we address that for some of our elementary school students that might need their device to read from or to do homework from?
Sure, that is, I mean, um, we back to the practice that we had, we had them. And that is work that we do with teaching, learning and building, building it. So, um, we're elementary school reading the type of, during the day. Uh, we do have. Their reason, the device on their mechanism, place to, that is the, uh, the practice. Uh, as scale that it is for a high school, where the devices are checked out. Working, working, it isn't, well. It is now.
And then another thing I've seen districts use, you, you talk about, um, we're getting new devices at the high school and then middle school and then downs. Um, I've seen some districts use their old device to allow families to connect. So I'm just wondering what the plan is or have you thought about how to provide access to families and community members that need devices with the old devices? Or what's going to happen to the old devices?
It's a great question. Um, and then. It's a great question. Um and then this is uh for many things. The one that I'm very proud of is for many of the old devices that are still found in vice. Those devices. Put them. That money goes to. Able to kind of realize another return on that investment. Is that then have this version of one um but now. Some devices. As there is available for for bridge and there is there are guidelines on our standard for schools. Devices to families, so we already had that in place. So if uh we have devices that are older.
Ugana?
Hi Steve, it's a shame. Um my question is, um I had a parent switch out to me not too long ago. She said her um student has unrestricted access to YouTube. On this call computer on his school um Chromebook and um she had tried to. Uh report it and you know, find a way to restrict his access, but that never. Uh seems to work. Do you know anything about that? Do do students have unrestricted access to certain sites? On their phone books and is there a way to uh curtail that?
They do have access to access to. Um because any education, we saw this around YouTube. We uh filter to device and publish your content. Uh we also have seen. In our issues that that further restricts uh what students can see to make sure it's appropriate. Parents also have the ability through our lights. Log in and actually manage to. So for example, we had a number of parents who contacted us with information about technology. Uh we'd like to make sure that you made one access. For that, I believe we. Parents have the ability to go in and set those uh parameters. So we don't have to do that very slowly. It is over. But on or off, like there's just. From how you know, you leave it in there and it's also a lot of things that help. A lot of time. Want to be sure that it's able to be educational purposes or maybe even for also in schools.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you. You've been helping me for like the last six months. I want to thank you and your staff for how um exactly you talked about how customer focused. Uh you folks are and thank you for explaining um that we're in a in an age where we do have to have the insurance. Um but um mostly for continuing to work, especially with our computer science teachers who are so dedicated. To providing a good experience for our students and a learning experience. Um but still working with them on having the the right access and the often so um thank you so much for um always. Um being so customer focused, you and your staff. So really, really appreciate that.
Sanita?
Yeah, thanks for all the work that you guys are doing and. I had a question, which is a follow up to what Ugana was saying. Um. Do you guys provide any training for the parents on how to? Manage their kids because not everybody's tech savvy. So is there any training or any? Information provided to the students that they can match their kids' laptop or?
There is, there are a number of these books. Website for parents um for everything from technical support, how do I work uh manage the light speed setting? Be uh means of more technology or others supports they might be. Uh we now we can in conjunction collaboration. During staff uh during. So. Um that would go and where listening to really. Or train that. Bring it to see. Once we all move, oh, um here's ourselves. Well. Now I have trouble with that device. Very differently than we. And so there are a number of uh supports we have for parents, but most of them are on the public.
So if anybody, if any parent has a question. About a B M D laptop, who do they go to or which website do they look at?
Uh it's it uh I know the I C department on the on the website. Um there are contact uh informations. Message. Okay, if you learn and then we'll issue you.
Thank you.
And questions from the board? Thank you, Steve. Excellent presentation. Uh next up, we have uh the financial or actually the annual comprehensive financial report with Mike Schofield and Rob Drake. Rob, it's great to see you. Thank you for your continued service year after year to the school district. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thanks for the board. Uh tonight we have a guest, the folks joining me, the definitely our wrong great, as you mentioned. We're the uh chair of our audit committee and Jason Bush, the one who uh did all of the heavy lifting together. And those all of that today. So with that, I will turn it over to start the show. Rob, go ahead.
Good thing you, Mike, uh I'm cheerful and board members. Uh thank you for talking to Peter tonight. And also thank you for the ability to serve. School district as I have. Um. I have a roughly forty year background in local government that I just completed. Some of it is elected, some of it was appointed. And um. I'm really proud of the district how one it's been managed and two the annual results. And this is a venture that we do personally because I'm a taxpayer in the school district. Um I went to school in the school district and um. Uh it's exciting to come to these meetings when I do because I I hear the general stuff that's happening and. It's important, I think, for the public that we've all served one way or another. They should know that the law is being followed. By the board, by your financial staff. And your collective staff. So uh these reports are good and I'll highlight them. Uh briefly, but I think they're important that the public cares of. Um. Your audit committee is comprised of board members and lay members of the community and uh. We just serve because we want to serve and uh this annual comprehensive financial report. Which like I said, Davey and the staff have done the collective work with it. But the part of it that I'm involved in is that. Um you hire an accounting firm, this case with Pro Mueller and Swayco or CPAs, but under Oregon law. Of municipal corporations have to have an audit done annually. And it's done by a third party that yes, you pay for, but. Um the reports I get back from the audit firm is your financial staff. Is very accommodating, provides what they need. And there's a very professional giving back for them. I think with that kind of. Need in. It's no wonder that the reports are decent because your staff does a really good job. This year, like many years past, this is uh the report received an unmodified clean opinion. Uh for the period ending June thirtieth of this year. And um. Uh this document is not for the faint hearted, but it's comprehensive as it is. You should know that um it's also a team's award annually. One uh is the G F O A or Government Finance Officers Association. Certificate of Achievement. And this is something that is evaluated by a third party and they evaluate how the report is done. And how easy it is for me to be easy to understand. And this is forty first year. Of receiving this award to be a real school bishop. And making sure uh Jason and Nate's rule at the point.
That's very is alive.
Public should know that. As the third party saying the law is being followed, it's readable form. And it follows national acceptance standards and then that's really critical. And also the association's tool business officials international. Also awarded certificate of excellence in financial reporting that the district again. Is this a report and everything associated with it for the fortieth consecutive year. It might be easy. Gloss over and not say much about it, but as a taxpayer of the district and. You know my way around budgets very well. These documents are well done and any any finance staff, any school or any board will be proud to. Have this be our byproduct. And so um I have nothing bad to report tonight other than uh. Um. It's going to get harder and harder, I think, for your staff to continue maintaining their excellence, but they seem to do it. Year in and year out and I'm just proud to be. Reviewing each year. And with that, you have to either turn it over to Jason or back to.
Well, I'd just like to say my thanks to my dear for Rob and the entire audit meeting. Join us. Um their feedback and their perspective is important and I'm in the community. How that inputs correctly to the audit firm and to us and how that communication of both. Thank you.
Okay, uh questions from the board. Uh see Susan?
More of a thank you for um for many years of Rob for uh. Volunteering in our school district and for your service generally. So thank you very much and thank you both. Gentlemen sitting there next to you for stellar work.
Eric?
I like two comments. Um Jason, nice job this year. I know the um you know, the financial department was short staffed. So I mean, this is. Really scholarly work and then I thought this might be a year you might have not perfection, but you got perfection. So great work. And then Rob, thanks for your tireless service. I know you love this kind of stuff too, which is awesome. So I hope you keep on doing it. And um and it was good to have you facilitating all the CPAs um you know, on the budget audit committee as well as the uh other CPAs from the community. I mean, I think it's always great to have experts, you know, looking and asking questions like you. You facilitate those meetings. So thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Nina?
So, thank you, thank you, and thank you. Thank you, Rob. I know you're retiring, so you have signed up for us. And Jason, oh, you were gonna say something? Go ahead. Uh and Jason, thank you. I know how much work it is and. You did a great job, so did Mike, and thank you all of you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the most daunting uh processes when you become a school board member is. We're responsible for a billion dollar. Budget with our capital bond campaign as well as our general and it's most of us. And we're very fortunate to now have two that do have a financial background, but for you know, I feel very. Uh fortunate in that not only do we have an expert finance staff, but that we have people from the community who also have expertise and it. Helps me sleep better at night to know. Um and I know a lot of people that the three most beautiful words are. I love you, but I would say uh in this case, an unmodified clean. About as good as a gift.
Beautiful.
The right.
Thought you were funny today.
Off that joke. I try either. Um I just, I really thank you for the report. As a new board member, reading through, I learned a lot like um. The even the the write up, it shows how much you know about our district and um. Um and and thinking about the legislative session and how we actually need, you know, ten point three billion. And it and it's and understanding that like it's. A growth of, you know, like five percent each year, and then that's actually ten percent, like all those little details that I wouldn't have known as a board member. Um it's really helpful to have that all in one place and it has helped me understand better the financial piece, which is part of our responsibility. So thank you. For the way it was written up too.
Thank you for the report and and thank you for reminding us that uh the Beaverton School District has been knocking these all apart before some of us were born here. So.
Thank you.
Uh I think Mike, I think you stay with us for the financial update.
Yeah, we can stick around. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, you have a friendly finance update. Uh include our general fund activity and forecasts, revenue, expenditure, the forecast. Uh on good right, let's take a look at the time and we look for our year to date activity and forecast. For the TV made only one minor modification, but that's the state's full home. We increased our state's full fund by two million dollars. That's based on the most recent. And they didn't rate before that sitting on that again due to. Our enrollment statement. So number of districts got bigger started, those based on forecast, they all of us made. And once we got our uh actual enrollment and started looking at first quarter, a number of districts. Which are down. Your students gain more dollars for the. Increase our forecast by two million dollars. That's the only change. I'll take any questions.
Questions from the board? Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Um next up, we have Carrie Delph with the local option levy election results, which. Think we have a sense they were quite good. Um sure, we're interested to learn more.
Thank you. I'm very. But I'm a person who's paid a great but positive report. Um as the board knows, the media election shows the strong support of our community, the local community that helps funding. Schools and they need to pay for nearly three hundred teachers this year and continue for the next five years. Thank for their support. In uh week, we received the official certified election results that show um not only the the final count. Uh but also the breakdown by uh by precincts. And we have the opportunity, uh there hasn't been time to map this yet at this point, but um wanted to show the board what the breakdown is by the precincts. In the Beaverton School District. The total outcome of this vote was nearly seventy two point four percent. Support country to the very strong. Think back to that was very well distributed across the district. Um if you look at the different precincts in the district, I I've color coded them here to stand how would say it's conceived. Blue, it's green or yellows. Green is in the seventies, yellow is in the sixties, pink is in the fifties. And there is a gray for gone or or not mission reasons, but you won't see much of that. Um you see that as you go across the entire district. Screen at Trump with me here, we have home series with seventy percent plus support of the local option levy. There were a few areas where it was a little bit narrow or support was still strong, uh between fifty and sixty percent. And there were a grand total. Of two precincts, which there was not majority support for the local option levy. One of them uh was a small precinct with seventy one uh seventy one dollars tax and that was uh that that so passed forty six. Plus percent. Uh and then there were what we do have a few precincts in Oldham County. That's actually the reason the J that turned forty eight J. We're joining the Oldham County and Oldham County overall are both small number of voters in Oldham County also. There was one precinct that did not have majority support on their court. Total of four of those. In that district. And um one of this voted towards that. So this is the. It's with the communities, the hard work of all the people who uh work to support uh that information campaign. Um and we will share this. People as well.
Thank you.
Question from the board?
I just want to say thank you, Carrie, for this detailed information and the support from the community and the help from the. Teachers and volunteers and donors who made this happen for the school. Thank you.
With that, we're gonna take a ten minute break here. Um and come back at eight sixteen.
Yeah, if it's still there, I.
Shape of um this year and. They're fairly self-explanatory. Excellent, please. This is the oldest at all. On the left is the enrollment for Bonnie's Flow. And the right is Finland. You can see how the Finley enrollment has applied. From high in school year two thousand fourteen. To a uh. A three hundred students. What I would note in this graph is, is it illustrating resident? So the enrollment number is going to be a little bit different. Alright, so you can see on the Bonnie's Flow side. The gray background shows the permanent capacity of six hundred and twenty-five students. Currently, the uh resident population is six hundred and sixty-eight. You can see on the color bars on the top, those are the owner of students. From the affected radius. So the grid code that is um. That has most students here, that here in that. That shows seventy-eight. So we started, um, as I mentioned, looking at these three grid codes of the uh northern part of the. In this area, both are uh grid codes one thirty, one eleven forty-two, and eleven fifty-one. During our uh engagement process, many members came to us and said, um. We have another option for you, which we did. And the option um for us. Was to look at grid code one thirty. And through this um analysis, we can see that. A um large number of students that exist today. Are within walking distance of Finley Elementary. We provided the. On the slope. And um it wouldn't. Rely overly on portals at Finley. As would have been um the case if all three or two of the three grid codes were levels two. So, and this is grid code one thirty isn't the option. That has been forwarded as the uh recommendation for. You'll uh note that the area on the right, or excuse me, the area on the left, that is. And the area on the right-hand side of grid code is largely undeveloped. This graph shows our forecast for students. For the um promoted Philly and Bonnie's Flow. You'll know that the orange line is our high growth assumption. And our redish line is a low growth function. Or um for the high growth assumption, that means. Development is going to happen rapidly and continuously in the uh uh grid code areas. We really think that the um, based on what we've been seeing over the past few years. Um uh uh presentations we've been making in the past few months. And we are going to be at best in the middle range of of growth for the next three years of this area. There is development still taking place for a work break in grid codes eleven uh fifty-one. So we think that based on our analysis. There is room at Bonnie's Flow long-term to accommodate uh growth. And the growth in the Finley attendance area. Will be below or right around their uh capacity as well. They do have those additional uh portable classrooms on the west side of the school. And there are sufficient, there is sufficient room in those portals, shouldn't they be? We will do it in this slide. The green areas mark areas of of transportation being provided. And the orange area is walkable area, the so therefore no transportation is provided. For the. For the grid codes. So, the orange area in grid code one thirty, yeah, that is walkable to Finley. But the green area in one thirty. Transportation will be provided because there is not a safe way for. Uh road there does not have sidewalks, um your road speed is um pretty high, so. Green codes eleven forty-two, eleven fifty-one will be provided transportation in uh Bonnie's Flow. And even if those areas were uh uh as shown to you in Finley. Um attendance area, they would still receive transportation. Again, they're um in. Walking uh to Finley in that area and. Certainly, um, grid code eleven forty-two is for them. This shows you our recommended. Program for legacy wins. Providing third grade, third graders and current fourth graders would be. Allowed the option to choose to remain at Bonnie's Flow. Thirty-one students. And I have the notes here. It is eighteen third graders and thirteen fourth graders. Uh that would be affected uh under the legacy program. Transportation will be provided for uh those who chose to remain at. On the slope, under the legacy program.
Questions from the board? Anita?
Thank you for the presentation. Um my question is, what about the sibling? There any consideration for the siblings?
Tell you that right now. There are seven kindergarten, seven first graders, and there are no second graders.
That is that too much burden for the school? Transportation or what 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 could be the consequence of giving them the consideration that they can stay in Bonnie's Flow? For the fourteen students?
It is largely transportation issue there. We'd be running an extra bus line for another. But it's fourteen and eventually seven.
The parent says I'll drive my kid. Would that be? Okay, that's taken away.
Ultimately, this is our recommendations, or bad recommendations.
Thank you.
The first read for and for consideration, so. Would appreciate all the questions from the board, so staff can review all the comments and make a final recommendation here.
Thanks.
Um one of, it's just wondering around, um. When you have the slide with the yellow part, those that's like a walking zone of of that section. And then there's the zone that will get transportation. If you said if the students had transportation before, they would get transportation out to Finley? So if they were getting transported to Bonnie's Flow, even though they're in the walk-in, so they would get transportation? Is that I I was just trying to clarify that for my.
Yellow area is. And most students will either be asked for uh walk, I didn't look, the uh walk somewhere around uh. For the three good grid codes that we're looking at. In grid code one thirty, that orange area will not receive transportation. It will be walkable to Finley and those students will walk to Finley. The rest of grid code one thirty that's in green, you'll get transportation to Finley. Because there is no route for them to walk. Now, if there are students and their families who should the legacy program to Bonnie's Flow. That live in. They would receive transportation to Bonnie's Flow.
I can just see, make sure kids get on the right bus. It'll be a fun first week of school.
Yeah, usually is.
But the name takes on early parents.
Ugana?
I think you might have answered my question. I had a question on transportation and now my laptop is dead. I think you've answered my question. Thank you.
The questions from the board?
Um I just had a comment. I know a lot of parents have given input, um and I appreciate you taking in the superintendent. Taking all that into account, um and coming up with an option that seems to. Have get to where we need to get to with numbers, but also still address some of the. Pieces that were raised by our families. So thank you for picking that all into consideration and adjusting as as we could.
Yes, and I would second that. We appreciate the flexibility and the community and come back with an even better plan, so. You so much for this. Um okay, now we have action items for our meeting. Um. Okay, so the first action item is declaring Merle Davies' surplus property. Do I hear a motion? Uh to uh declare Merle Davies' surplus property?
I move that um the school board declare Merle Davies' building as surplus. And authorize the district to facilitate the staff to attempt to sell the structure. And place any revenue generated through, sorry, I'm having a hard time reading it, a sale in the general fund.
I second the motion.
Need discussion on the matter?
Um I will be voting in favor of this. I um. I appreciate the community weighing in in the last few days uh on on this, um. And um expressing uh having meeting places. We can always use more meeting places in our community uh by far. Um I hope if if there is a will, um if it's for sale, that maybe something else could be. Moved and and done with it, but I think we've we've established that. Uh it's a brick building and it wouldn't be the seismic upgrades to it, um you know, even if it weren't. And the, you know, we've been shown now here for several months where the footprint of the new high school needs to be. Um and so uh that with all the due diligence that's been done by by the architect and and by the planning. Um I will be voting yes to put um Merle Davies on as surplus property.
Karen, then Ugana?
Yeah, um I was gonna speak to um that as well. The um actual Merle, Merle Davis Building, um because it's not safe for seismic, so even if we were to leave it. I know we can't because it's in the spot where we're going to be building the new school and there's other pieces involved, but. It's not a safe building to um to just say, okay, let's let's change everything and it would take a lot of money. It's all the. Been the conversation that's been happening for a long time, but it's not seismicly sound to uh be used still. And then the other part is I saw um within the Beaverton High School input from our community. Um there is, the community has asked for a like a community space or some space within the new building. And that is something that's being looked at as well. So that's within the input um that the community has given. You've been heard. We know it's something um that our community wants, something that we want is to have our community. You know, come together, so um. Looking at how other other ways that we can collaborate and work um on providing those spaces for our community is important.
I was going to ask a question, but I think um Karen has given the clarity that I wanted. I I'm not sure this is a good time to ask a question, but I'm not gonna ask it because Karen just um drew my light. On this issue for me. Um I believe in our community voices. And um I do not take it for granted when our community members. Hear their opinion on issues that have historical significance to them. And tonight. I've heard from members of our committee, um based on the um. Based on what I have heard from them and the significance of this building. To our community members, I would not be putting yes tonight. Not our life would know, but I would not vote at all on this issue.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the board? Okay, um then we will uh do a roll call of board members. Um you can answer with I, nay, or abstain when I call your name. Susan Greenberg?
Hi.
Tedham Perez?
Hi.
Eric Simpson?
Hi.
Anita Guard?
Hi.
Ugana Ananaya?
Isn't neither? Sorry, abstain.
Gotcha. Becky Timchuck?
Hi.
Um Colette, hi, and the motion passes uh with six yeses and one abstain. Um next up, we have the declaration of surplus property for portable classrooms. Uh do I hear a motion to uh declare these portable classrooms as surplus property?
Yep.
I recommend that the school board declare the twenty-seven portable structures as surplus. And authorize the district to faci- facility staff to sell or otherwise dispose of the portable structures. And place any revenue generated through the sale in the general fund.
I second the motion.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Um board members, any questions or comments on this item?
I have a question. Um last time we were. Uh I think Dr. Baldur is was gonna look into whether we can donate anything for Club Hope or homeless. You, would you, would you look at, did anybody look into that?
Go for two, but surplus property, how do we dispose of surplus property?
I know our routine process is we will list them for sale on a website called. Uh people and if there are no offers after, I believe it's thirty-five days, we then. Come meet them to a office or.
Thank you.
This is the clarify, um you mentioned in the Finley piece that there might be some portals that would remain there. Those aren't included in this part or?
No, they're not included in this.
Other questions or comments? Okay, um great. Board members answer with I, nay, or abstain when I call your name. Susan Greenberg?
Hi.
Tedham Perez?
Hi.
Eric Simpson?
Hi.
Anita Guard?
Hi.
Ugana Ananaya?
Hi.
Becky Timchuck?
Hi.
Um Colette, hi, and the motion passes unanimously. Um next up, we have the appointment of bond accountability committee members. Do I hear a motion to appoint the bond accountability committee members?
Comment, please. Sorry.
No problem.
I wasn't prepared. Um.
Take your time.
Okay, thank you.
For all time twisters.
Okay, um here we go. Let's see, it's on here. Sorry, I'm having computer problems now. Uh it is recommended the school board approve the selection of the proposed members to serve on the twenty twenty-two bond accountable. Accountability Committee.
I second the motion.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions from the board? I have one comment. I'm going to be abstaining from the vote tonight. I uh have a, in my day job, I have a professional relationship with Mr. Watt. Um and I've looked into that. It is not an actual conflict of interest, but because it could pose the appearance of such. Um I'm going to be abstaining from the vote. Any other questions, comments? Okay, great, then we will uh move forward. Board members uh answer with I, nay, or abstain. Um Susan Greenberg?
Hi.
Tedham Perez?
Hi.
Eric Simpson?
Hi.
Anita Guard?
Hi.
Ugana Ananaya?
Hi.
Becky Timchuck?
Hi.
Um Colette, I abstain, and the motion passed to six zero. Um next up, we have the OSBA Board of Directors election.
That one.
Hear a motion?
I thought we were voting on the metro one first.
Metro, oh, sorry. Approve the metro, okay, do I hear a motion to approve the Metro Policy Advisory Council nomination?
I move that this board approves the nomination of Beaverton School Board Member Susan Greenberg to serve on the Metro. Policy Advisory Committee, representing school boards in the region. And that we further uh nominate the Hillsborough School Board Member Mark Watson to serve as the alternate on the Metro Policy Advisory Committee.
I'll second the motion.
It's properly moved and seconded. Any questions, comments from the board?
I'll be voting yes on this because I think Susan will do a great job in representing us at the metro level. And I appreciate that her willingness to step up and do so.
And I would just echo.
Thank you.
I would echo uh both my fellow board members. Thank you for stepping up for this, Susan, and doing some extra duty for us and representing. Uh of a good deal of school districts, actually, at the metro level. That is much appreciated.
I think it'll be interesting to get connected with a different group of people.
Yeah, well, yeah, please report back to us. Let us know what you find out. You're very interesting. Um okay, um board members, answer with I, nay, or abstain. Uh Susan Greenberg?
Hi.
Tedham Perez?
Hi.
Eric Simpson?
Hi.
Anita Guard?
Hi.
Ugana Ananaya?
Hi, and thank you, Susan.
Becky Timchuck?
Hi.
Tom Colette, hi. The mass, the motion passes unanimously. And now we have the OSBA Board of Director election. Hear a motion? Becky?
Hi, it's awkward.
I move um that the Beaverton School District, uh being a member of the Oregon School Board Association, that we nominate Susan Greenberg. For the position of number fifteen to the Oregon School Board Board of Directors and Maureen Wolf uh for the position number sixteen.
I second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, comments from the board?
Just saying it's awkward.
This is a, it's always a very important position, but this is a very important position as we get ready for this legislative session and. The voices that we have uh here in Washington County uh to be served at the state level are very important and Susan has done. Uh a great job in the past and um Maureen Wolf also are both very dedicated um to that statewide voice. And uh we're very fortunate to have both of them represent us in Washington, Washington County at the state level.
Um just wanted to state, what if you need help, um just make sure that you let the board know and um we can serve you as we go to. Advocate for our students um in Salem.
Oh, for sure. Oh, for sure. I'll say that again. Oh, for sure.
And I would just go ditto and ditto. Thank you for stepping up, Susan.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll uh do the vote, so board members can answer with I, nay, or abstain. Susan Greenberg?
Hi.
Tedham Perez?
Hi.
Eric Simpson?
Hi.
Anita Guard?
Hi.
Ugana Ananaya?
Hi.
Becky Timchuck?
Hi.
Tom Colette, hi, the motion passes unanimously. Now we have the last uh item of the night, the OSBA Legislative Priorities. Do I hear a motion to adopt these priorities?
I can do it. I can, I'll do that one. Um first of all, I want to say that we will all be involved in um. Uh legislative advocacy. It's 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 gonna take our whole board and it's gonna be an uphill ba- battle. Um.
Susan, can you give me a motion so we can open up a conversation on this item?
Okay.
Sorry to be a stickler.
Um I'm just trying to find, okay, I move that we uh. Approve um the OSBA um legislative priorities.
I second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded, so we go back to Susan with some.
Uh my comment is just exactly what I said, that um, you know, uh. This is an uphill ba- battle and and we. Becky is um our rep rep in in terms of the legislative agenda. What and what's the committee called, Becky?
Policy.
Policy Committee for OSBA and I know that um we're looking at potential dates for. OSBA um meeting with uh the Washington Counties um. Uh school districts and I don't think we've come up with a solid date yet, but we are working on that. So there's an opportunity right there for advocating to state legislators. As well as uh we're working on some dates in the our district in terms of meeting with legislators.
Becky?
If you haven't had a chance, I encourage you to, this is, this is the legislative policy, um this has worked on for over a year. And and it ebbs and flows and it's it's made up of people from around the state. Um and. What this does is for our folks that lobby at the state level for the Oregon School Board Association. That they know what our priorities should be, because there'll be a lot more other subjects and bills that come up, but they know what our priorities are. Number one, of course, being the funding, uh the Common School Fund being the number one. But there will be other things that come up and that they see what our priorities are. Um I will be participating in weekly updates. I know our superintendent will be getting weekly updates. And I will then assume pass that on, and then when they call us to come, which is gonna be very hard because the the capital is in. Major disarray, so there can only be so many people in the building at one time. Um but when there is time for us to talk to, especially to our Washington County legislators, we will all be called upon, but. Um these are priorities that have been set, um that have been worked on for over a year.
Great, and I would just add that um this is so important. What we're doing here with the legislature, because when we are advocating, we're not just advocating for a dollar amount, we're advocating for our capacity as the board to be able to take on. Priorities in the coming years. So if we get this foundation right from the state, sets the stage for all of the other work that we do. And with that, Susan, whatever you need, stand ready to help advocate with you and our superintendent and all of our other board members, so we're united front. And asking for what our kids deserve in terms of funding.
Um can I make a comment just kind of attached to advocacy? Um the superintendent, Bob, that Ferris um spoke to. Um. The Q E M, and I want to make sure everybody knows, because it's been such a long time and we've talked about Q E M for years and years and years and years and. Years, um what that is. So if someone can explain that, um. And I know what it is, but I don't know if everybody on the board knows what Q E M is. Um.
So Q E M is a.
Quality.
That's produced, I think, every two years. And um it's put together by administrators, um education professionals like teachers. And it basically says if we were funding our schools at the level our kids deserve, what would that look like and what would that cost? And every time that they produce that, we have been under that amount markedly, markedly. Um by billions of dollars in our state. So build the model for what we should provide to kids. And then they come up with the price tag. There's one way of looking at education funding is what we're doing. We're advocating for our service level to make sure that we don't slip under the current service level we have right now. The other way is what would we do if we're actually giving our kids the education they deserved? The other way is what would we do if we're actually giving our kids the education they deserved? What would that model look like? And Q E M is that bright light that hopefully one day we'll see in this state.
My, I, my, my co- comment is that we have stayed to the north and I stayed to the south that. They, they uh budget their education to the Q E M and I'm saddened that our state doesn't.
The north is the state to the south, kind of like us.
Oh, really? How about parts of the state do? Okay. So don't, thank you for that, yes.
Um, okay, without further comments, then we will take a vote. Board members answer with I, nay, or abstain when I call your name. Susan Greenberg.
Aye.
Tedham Perez.
Aye.
Eric Simpson.
Aye.
Anita Guard.
Aye.
Ugana and Anaya.
Aye.
Becky Timchuck.
Aye.
Tom Colette, aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Uh now we have time for board communications. Any final comments from board members today? Anita.
Since this is the last meeting of the year, I just want to thank everyone. This was, I think, the first year for me, actually, I have learned so much as a member. And having the levy passed and having a wonderful superintendent um and big board members. Uh the next, uh I I guess somebody else will talk about it, but we are, we will be looking for new board members and uh so. Please apply and have happy holidays and fun holiday season. Thank you very much.
Um I just wanted to thank um our staff. We had some listening sessions in the last, um since our last um board meeting and I. Um it's not, people did a great job answering the community's questions. So thank you Heather and Carl and Mike and Shelley and Carrie. All those folks that have, and Dr. Baldetis and all the other staff members that have showed up at all those to answer our community's questions. I think it's great that um. We hear what our community has to say and that we also are responsive to to um their questions. And then also wanted to um thank um Diana for all her work organizing us this year and getting our meals and getting us to places that we're supposed to be. It's a big heavy lift, um and we're, you know, we're a bunch of group of board members moving in many directions, so I know that it's not an easy job all the time. Um and then I know that um our health authorities has in the O D has talked about. Um recommended masking for our students and families, um especially as they're coming back from the um the break, just to keep people safe. But we know that's a family decision, uh student decision, um staff member decision, but um know that we'll welcome people into our building. With mask or without mask, but that we um we admitted that we use them as we come back. So I'm gonna put that out there. And also thank you to Susan and the H R department for that um big event, more and more staff into our sub pool. I know it, not having enough subs is very impactful to our students and our staff, so thank you for continuing to work on that.
Becky.
We've already talked about this a lot today, that um I spent the day um at the Oregon um leadership summit. And it was with a thousand Oregonians from around the state, and um it was the first time we got to hear from our new governor-elect. Um speak as well as um other legislative leadership, um new senate president. Um after twenty years, we have a new senate president, um a new speaker of the house uh that was elected. So we have new leadership, as already mentioned, we have a lot of new legislators. Um and I will tell you, after spending the day um listening to folks speak on. Homelessness, mental health, um uh the importance of getting a semiconductor here to bring in warm funds and. The competition that we have around the country. Um I was sitting with several legislators and they said, boy, we've got a lot of things we have to solve. And I said, yes, that's why we have you. Um but I will tell you, as we have already stated here, we are going to have a heavy lift. K twelve is going to have a heavy lift. Whether it be higher ed or whether it be early education, um there are a lot of people that feel that the legislature did their part the last session with the Student Success Act. And it is going to be all of us, so I encourage. Watch the news, read the newspaper, follow the legislature. Um because this is going to be very important and definitely heard from uh Governor-elect Kotek and from leadership. Education's important, but they've got a lot of important things on their plates, so we are going to have to speak with one united voice. Very strong and be very tenacious on behalf of what's right for students. And I hope everybody has a restful and peaceful um holiday with their family and friends, and we come back refreshed and ready to go in January.
It's quick because we're talking advocacy. Um we have an advocacy um committee meeting just uh on. And say, I had to think in my brain would say that was so. Coming up. For you to.
Well, I hope everybody has an excellent break and a restful holiday. Uh when we come back, we've got a lot of work to do and things are gonna accelerate towards the end of the year with budget season and other things starting. Working on the strat plan, there'll be advocacy like everybody's talking about, so get your rest while you can. And look forward to seeing everybody in January so we can hit the ground running. And with that, um.